Good morning, Mr. New York. Good morning, this is the New York City Order Standards and Appeals Public hearing number 21, 2017. We begin with a special order, now, decision item number 1240-55BZ, 20722, Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Good morning, Adam Rothberg. We've asked for an adjournment on this item. The owner has decided that he cannot really accept the condition that would eliminate vehicular access to the rear portion of their lot. It requires that they rely on other lots that they own separately, but are independently operated with different dealerships.
Do we reopen this?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah, we need to reopen. We closed this for a decision. All right, so for a motion to open...
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Abstain.
Right, go ahead. No, it's just to reopen.
It's just to reopen. Open.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Aye.
It's okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Adam.
That's okay. So what we would like to do is make a final submission to the board. We will try to impose as many conditions on the operation of the lot as we think are reasonable, but we think it's an unreasonable request that the rear access be eliminated completely now that the use is being changed to a use that doesn't have a access from Northern Boulevard through the building anymore.
So, this is a surprising turn of events. We've been at this since August of last year. Long ago, we came to the understanding that access would be restricted and that there was a way to accomplish it, given that there's relationship between the different operations adjacent. And I don't want to do this, and I don't think there's any reason to keep this going, or think we closed, we can close again, and we should just vote. The Community Board was very clear that there shouldn't be any access from that point. We talked about that over and over again.
No, the Community Board actually issued letters in support indicating they did not have a problem with our accessing it from the rear. The only opposition we're aware of is one letter from a local resident who doesn't live anywhere near here.
Excuse me, that's a representative of the community, so it's not a local resident who doesn't live anywhere near. It's representing the community concerns that are around the area.
So I understand the board's desire to possibly close today, but we would like, again, one additional opportunity to make a submission that would include affidavits from the owners on 45th that they don't have a problem with the operation of this facility. This operator has several other properties on this block, and there are other properties they don't own. They have several curb cuts that they have agreed not to use just voluntarily because the property affected has other available access. But again, making this property reliant on another adjacent property is not something that this owner decided that they can accept.
So here's the thing. This application has been adjourned multiple times. And at the last hearing in September, I'm going to just read my notes, says, "At the last hearing in January, with three adjournments since, we ask that the 45th Road gate be closed to vehicles and that the 45th Road frontage be planted with den shrubs. We also ask for an easement agreement to allow passage of the cars for this use over the parking lots of the adjacent owners." The submission for today's hearing, which is nine months after the last hearing, shows only the 45th Road vehicle gate closed and no allowance for planting, no agreement with the adjacent property owners, and so on. Given the slow prosecution of this case by the applicant, this was my comments, I would say that if we don't receive these materials, including a light spread diagram revised plan showing landscapes and so on, that we'll dismiss the application for failure to prosecute. We can also just vote on the application. So I just don't, and if we dismiss, then it renders the auto sales use illegal and the current activity on the site not complying with the existing variance.
Well, we would request that the board vote on the application with the understanding that the owner has not agreed to give up the rear vehicular access. And again, the reason it took so long, the reason it took so long is that it was a very difficult decision in the owner's mind, and again, requiring that this property be tied up with an easement over an adjacent property that's not subject to any jurisdiction of the Board or any other agency, again, at the end of the day resulted in a decision that he was not willing to accept at the current time, so...
Well, if he's not willing to accept it, then he has to go back to, so this is an extension of it, this application is an extension of term of a previously approved variance permitting the operation of an automotive repair facility, not a car sales facility, right? So if we deny this application or dismiss for failure to prosecute, the only legal use potentially is the operation of an automotive repair facility, but we haven't been asked to extend the term on that because the request is to amend the application.
That's correct.
So, does he, I mean, I know your client understands that if we dismiss, or if we deny...
We understand the impact of the decision, but...
And I don't see any purpose in keeping this. We've been at this for more than a year with huge delays in prosecution. We had four adjournments. This would be the fifth adjournment.
Well, again, so...
Since March?
Again, the problem is that it's not a matter of not wanting to provide, or it is a matter of not wanting to provide what the Board wanted, but it's certainly a larger issue than just complying with some basic conditions or landscaping. Again, eliminating the rear access of this property is a long-term decision that adversely affects this property in a huge, in a huge manner, and that's why the owner had difficulty in finally coming to a decision where he's not left with an option. So again, I don't think the application should be dismissed. We are asking that the Board vote on the application.
I thought at the last hearing, we were told that vehicular access from Northern Boulevard could also be used.
Again, vehicular access from Northern Boulevard requires that we rely on other property owned by this owner.
No, 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 directly from the site.
Well, no, so our building, directly from the site, we have a building. When it was being used as a repair shop, it was not a problem. You had big overhead doors, and you weren't using the interior of the building, so cars could go through the middle of the building. Once we're changing it to what is essentially a conforming use in the C2 district, auto sales, we have to use the interior of the building for auto sales. We can't leave a roadway in the middle of our showroom so that cars, in order to get to the back, have to drive through the middle of a new car showroom.
At the last hearing, that was all agreed to, before the last hearing, the hearing before that, all of that was agreed to. So basically, the Board was led on this path to believe that the owner and owner's rep were cooperating with the Board's concerns and community concerns, and then at the very last second, it reverses position, the owner reverses position totally?
So again, I would say I don't agree that this is community concerns. We have, again, the Community Board...
Sorry, you can't discount the testimony from community representatives.
Well, but I can't discount the testimony of the Community Board. So to say the community has concerns, then, you know, the community, we also have community support, so I'll leave it at both. There's community concerns and there's community support.
The Community Board said no testing of vehicles on 45th Road.
Yes.
After we discussed, after we discussed how that would be controlled, we realized that actually it's impossible to prevent that from happening, especially if there's vehicular access to that road. And so that's why, and plus, there is a relationship between this car dealership and the adjacent car dealerships. Apparently, they're in common ownership. So there's no technical reason or legal reason why access from those other points wouldn't be possible.
Right.
And we were told that access through the car showroom was going to work, that they actually, didn't they say they're not going to be, they're just going to be storing, let's see, didn't they say they're, let's see, wheels? I thought they said they're only going to be storing show cars and not test cars now on the site, something like that.
That's correct.
Right, so then, why do they need to have further access than what we've discussed? But I don't want to rehash this. We've already been at this, countless hearings and countless adjournments. There's just no reason to go on anymore with this. So I'd like to make a motion to the close.
Motion to close, Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Aye.
And this was originally set up for a decision, so I'd like to either make a motion to dismiss for failure to prosecute or a motion to deny. To deny, really, even though we usually say a motion to grant, but in this case, it's recommending denial. I don't know how the other commissioners feel in terms of preferences about how we vote.
Well, I think, for me, the fact that prior it was an automotive repair use and the use that has been proposed is a conforming use, and it is a less noxious use in terms of the context. So from that point of view, I think the use is a preferred use. The question is how it serves its need, given its neighbor, neighboring use being residential. This is a residential district with a commercial overlay. So, in this case, yes, they do have a abating property owner they can take advantage of, but if these abating property owners was not under same ownership...
But they, we could say until the relationship changes, or something like, but yeah, I don't even really want to get into it anymore.
Right, so I think, honestly, I think more imposing conditions may address some of the concerns the community has. That's how I'm looking at it. Providing much more dense landscaping, restricting the hours of egress, and then, you know, that the drivers will take the cars. I mean, there are existing curb cuts that are there. It's a matter of allowing those points being used only at certain hours.
So I think part of the point is, of the opposition, is that this 45th Road became a de facto vehicle entry point for all of those uses, and that that's not how you use the residential entry point, and that it's kind of become like this dumping ground. What we were trying to do was pull back and eliminate that behavior. But anyway, I actually, I find this extremely frustrating because we've gone on for like 10 hearings here. So I would just like to, for lack of, I don't want to discuss this anymore. How many times do you discuss it? So I'd just like to make a motion to dismiss for failure to prosecute.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Abstain. Thank you.
Item number 2300BZ, 465-469 West 165th Street and 458-464 West 166th Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, Frank Chaney, Rosa Burgnessis, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, so I think we have everything we needed. Thank you for submitting those materials. I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Item number 3, 22702BZ, 527 East 133rd Street.
Good morning, Brian Congesali, DOD, Pleasure Citron, for the applicant.
Okay, um, okay, yes, we're fine with this. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to grant, please.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Abstain.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Item number 4, 2016-4255BZ, 4801 Ocean Park, Ocean Avenue, Brooklyn, sorry.
Elise Foladere for the applicant from Eric Palatnick, B.C., impassing around two different documents. One of them was the calculations redone as requested. I guess, like she said, it got a little caught up in the floodplain administrator situation. So we redid, the architect redid the calculations and restand.
Okay, well, obviously, we can't.
Okay. I'm gonna...
Check calculations.
Yeah, but I'm just showing you that he did do them, and we didn't forget that, because we also have to go for the ZDR1.
Yes.
So what I also handed out is, and they went to the AIA DOB internal meeting and proposed the question, and they said yes, but do a determination, so he's going to ask the same question that he asked the architect of the commissioners, or of the people at the AIA meeting, and take that and get his...
Sorry, what's the AIA meeting, other than the...
The AIA meets, but what's that happened? What is that? So he posed the question.
Who he?
The architect.
Architect of this project posed the question to the AIA?
To the Brooklyn DOB Industry Meeting, yes, of the AIA.
That's not the AIA, the Brooklyn Industry Meeting?
He said it was, that's what he told me it was.
Okay, so that's where the DOB has people from, architects from the outside meet to discuss the subjects in general. Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he met, and it's question, it's number five. He asked the question, and I highlighted it for you.
Asked what question?
He asked, he said that it's an existing detached one-family, two-story and cellar building located in floodzone AER 3-1 district. And the existing first floor elevation is 1.92 above the flood elevation, but there's also a below-ground cellar. The plan examiner agreed that the proposed third-floor addition is not a substantial improvement. BSA approved the additional FAR to add the proposed third floor pending clarification of the height measurement interpretation by DOB. Per definition, 1210, in either case, in the flood zone, either the base flood elevation may be the level of the base plane or building height may be measured from the flood-resistant construction elevation as provided in Article 6, Chapter 4. Because the proposed addition is not a substantial improvement, and we are not complying with the flood-resistant requirements, is it correct that the base plane for the above situation is the base flood? That's what he proposed.
But can I speak, because the whole issue, though, is that they, you presented it as you're just adding proposed third-floor space, and what you have to represent it as you're adding that third-floor space plus the area that has to be legalized.
Right.
But that is double the amount of space that you told them you were going to add.
Right.
So you can't take this answer, because it's not based on total information.
Well, I can tell him to revise it in the ZDR1. He just...
Right, and the other part of it is, he represented that the BSA had already approved the additional FAR.
Well, he said pending clarification. He wasn't...
No, 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 it's approved, except we need to know this little thing about the floodplain.
Yeah, okay.
So that didn't set up the facts.
Okay.
But nonetheless, I'm assuming that these are sort of meetings that, where everyone's sort of speaking generally, right, and people don't have a chance to really sit down and dig into something. They're doing, they're doing this around a table, right?
For determination.
No, I mean, in terms of how this is produced, this is not, is this, this is the industry meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we should use this as a guideline for us to make the determination that it's not a ZDR1.
I was just showing you that he is trying to pursue...
I think you need to submit it to ZRD1.
We definitely will. I'm just showing you that we're pursuing answers and talking with industry.
Okay, right, great. I mean, it's good that people discuss it, and they don't have the drawings.
It's good that you're progressing along and that you're pursuing the next step, which is the DOB ZRD1.
Okay, what date do you want? Right, but just remember, you're adding almost 1,300 square feet of space to an existing 1,772 square foot structure. So that's just got to be going forward.
Okay, and that's also why we're bringing it up, to get clarification with what you need from this year.
Okay, all right, so we just need to put this on for another time when you have, you've gotten your... Are there any speakers on this?
This case is on for decision. It's closed, the hearing is closed.
Yeah, but we're deferring it, right? Yeah, we have to defer, yeah, we have to defer it, so... So a ZD, ZRD1 takes some time to get, and it's holidays. So I'm kind of assuming like January...
The 30th, the 23rd or the 30th?
Yeah, the 30th.
The 30th?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So that's January 10.
January 30th. And a submission, obviously, we're just waiting for this ZRD1, so the submission could be, you know, the 26th of January, by then, as long, we just need to have it before the next, that hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Continue hearing, item number 5, 704-59BZ, 53 East 177th Street, the Bronx.
Hello, Jessica Rubenstein, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, so I think we're good with this. We didn't, we didn't close this, right?
No.
Okay, so are there any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, which we know that the fence and the kiosk have to be relocated prior to CFO, I guess, is what... Okay, thank you.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 6, 10706BZ, 140 East 63rd Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, Adam Rothberg.
Morning. So we did receive photos of the postings. You weren't allowed to post it in the building, but outside?
Yeah, we weren't allowed to post it in the building, but the management accepted it and said they had a procedure of emailing memo to the residents.
So are there any, just because you posted, are there any speakers on this application? It's 140 East 63rd Street, the Equinox? No? Okay, so we didn't receive anything from neighbors. I'm just curious, though, with respect to the apartments that seem to be the subject of the complaint and the subject of the sound acoustical study? The idea that those neighbors specifically were the ones who were having difficulties with the site?
So Equinox did take several steps, and as the Board is aware, there is litigation, so they're not, the Board's not the only people looking out over this. But again, I think the fact that the litigation seems to be on hold is a recognition of Equinox taking steps, continuing to take steps to avoid any problem. So it's not being actively prosecuted, as far as we know. And we think that the steps they took, based on, again, the inspection that they had by the noise consultant, have been effective.
Any other, any comments on this? You know, on the one hand, we give neighbors a lot of opportunity to come and voice their concerns, right, and that they didn't. I think, for the record, we should really say that we don't normally ask that neighbors be notified on these cases, on these extensions, and in this case, we asked that the lobby be posted. Management wouldn't allow the lobby to be posted, but said they distributed the information, but there were signs on lamp posts...
There were posts, there were signs right outside on every corner and right in front of the building.
Right, so if you were hot and bothered about this use, you'd at least send us a note, or, right, and we've gotten nothing.
Yeah, we have had other places where similar measures were taken.
And where tenants came, yes, and repeatedly come to, and so, you know...
Equinox took the complaints, and obviously, when it goes beyond complaints to actual litigation, they take it very seriously, so, you know, they did take steps to alleviate any issues, and they're looking to be a good, good neighbor.
Okay, so are there any, I asked around for speakers, so I think because we don't have any other information that would indicate that there continuing to be a problem, we can close this? So a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shearer?
Abstain. Thank you very much, and a happy holiday.
Item number 7, 26006BZ, 112 Charlton Street, also known as 547 Greenwich Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, I am the applicant and also represent the OIC Judo Club. During the first hearing, the Board decided that it would defer this matter pending inspection by the Fire Department of the alarm, standpipe, and sprinkler system. There wasn't representative of the Fire Department here. I don't know whether there is today.
No.
I received an email from that person, Mr. Yakovon, just last week, indicating that there was a personnel problem which is being or has been rectified, and that, I take it, inspection will occur soon. Beyond that, I have nothing to report.
So I guess my question, so the thing, it was installed, but we wanted to see proof of the installation, and that you had filed for a Fire Department inspection. Did you, was that done? We don't have proof. That was the issue.
The alarm, standpipe, and sprinkler system were installed initially as a condition to the use. And at the time, as I recall and understand it, there was an inspection and approval of the Fire Department. This is a renewal, and the system remains in place. I firmly believe it's operational, but you required that there be certification of that by the Fire Department, which has not yet occurred, I take it, because of logistical difficulties within the department.
Okay, so maybe there was a misunderstanding. So as a condition to the original approval, fire alarm and sprinkler had to be installed.
Correct.
When we look at these extensions, we want to make sure it was installed. So we ask for proof that the work was installed and inspected by the Fire Department, because many times we see these Because many times, we see these applications come for an extension, and the work was never done. So the proof that the work was installed is proof that there was, it passed inspection, right? So if it was installed in...
2006, '07.
So if it was installed in 2007, there was an inspection presumably sometime around that period, and you would be able to provide us with the proof of inspection?
I then did misunderstand. I thought that the board's requirement was some kind of proof by the department that it remained operational today.
But you're required to keep in having an inspector, you know, your alarm maintenance company and sprinkler maintenance company has to go in regularly and inspect to make sure they're operational. That's something they do on, they're supposed to do it at least annually, if not more often than that. So...
I have been in communication one-sided until last week with the fire department representative who spoke here, and said that the fire department would arrange for what the board required.
Right.
And is in the process of doing so.
Okay.
So if... It would be my preference...
That doesn't mean the fire alarm is functioning, the fire alarm's functioning. But do you have a CVO that reflects this use? A certificate of occupancy that reflects this use?
Yes, I believe so. I think it was submitted with the application.
Okay, I'm not sure. Okay, so here's the thing. In order to move this along, I'm sorry, there was a misunderstanding. We need proof that the fire alarm and sprinkler system were installed, and we need letters of affidavit, just to make this simple. Letters of affidavit from your fire inspection company and your alarm and sprinkler inspection company stating that they regularly inspect, and we have a standard form that they can use, stating that they regularly inspected and that the fire systems are in operational order according to the law.
So I take it that, at least for the moment, nothing from the fire department is required?
It's not required?
Other than perhaps retrieving the records from 10 years ago.
Right, correct. I mean, if the fire department responds faster, fine, but we don't expect it to respond faster. So if you could get those documents, and we have a standard affidavit form that you can give to the alarm and sprinkler installation company?
I'm just, yeah.
Yeah, but I, can you go down to see whether it...
Yeah, the CO mentions a fire alarm and sprinkler system are installed in the building.
Okay.
And it also notes the martial arts studio on the first floor. So we know it's been installed, we just don't know if it's been maintained.
Been maintained, okay. So the CVO indicates that it was installed. So we need from your inspectors, the fire alarm company that comes in and checks every year that it's working, the affidavits which we can send you a form of, okay?
Is that available online, or is it...
We will send you.
We'll send it to you. So if you would leave Tony Matias your email address, we can, we can send it to you, okay?
We'll do that.
Okay. So in that case, that shouldn't take too long, right? That should only...
It shouldn't, but I don't know.
Okay. Okay, so in that case, so why don't we put this on for like January... No, we can put it on for January 9th? I think it's mid-November, you just need to reach out to the alarm guys, right? So a month and a half to do this seems to me to be enough, right? So, so continue, you come back here on January 9th?
That'll be fine.
And as long as you submit those materials by, say, January 3rd, we're good, okay?
Understood.
Okay. So then, are there any speakers on this? So I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Okay. So just give Tony your email address, okay?
New cases, item number eight, 49929BZ, 24870 Horace Harding Expressway, Queens.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Morning.
We attended your review session yesterday, and we have photos of the landscaping of the property. I think that you'll be quite pleased with it, the site is actually very well maintained.
Sorry with this before you, would you, I'm sorry if I missed it in the transmission yesterday, did you submit proof of service of...
Yes, that came yesterday, late in the day yesterday. Rob Navarro sent it over, and I apologize if that wasn't in your files.
Okay, oops, maybe I have it here. Yeah, I do have, yeah, I saw it, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Give me some, it's around for Daryl.
Daryl?
So, as you can tell, you didn't even have to ask this operator to keep it nice, they keep it very nice. It's very well landscaped. This was all done prior to your request, it was just the photographs were taken yesterday. So hopefully that satisfies the board's request for the landscaping.
Okay, sorry. Could you just walk us through this, so we don't have to figure out what we're looking at? So you have existing landscaping and three-foot fence to remain, right? Okay. And then, so, sorry, why did you, why did you provide us with the BSA approved? Just to show that it's matching?
It was just showing you where it was matching. We wanted to give you just a description of, to show you what everything looks like, what the approved plans were, and show you what landscaping is in place. There really wasn't much on the last set of plans.
Right.
With respect to landscaping. But we wanted to show you how nice they keep the site. We wanted to send, give you pictures next to show the superfluous signage being taken down. So on the second photo, we showed you, you see there's a Marlboro, nobody should be smoking anymore anyway advertisement. There's also a repair shop sign there. So that's, that's all going to come down. The tire special by Ford tires.
So the Marlboro sign and the...
Yeah, all the, all the signs, it should not be up, those, none of those should be up.
So in the first photo, which shows the repair shop, a banner, a repair shop with an arrow and the Marlboro, those have been taken down?
All that's going to be taken down, we'll give you more photos for that. We couldn't have the operator take those down on such short notice, but we did have somebody go out yesterday to photograph the landscaping, just to show you the landscaping.
I do have some questions, this particular sign that is attached to the light bulb, I don't remember seeing it in the approved plan.
It's not, it shouldn't be there.
Okay.
Yeah, no, all the signage, that signage should be taken down. And we're going to give you, we're going to give you pictures showing it taken down, we just couldn't get to it overnight.
So this is just kind of progress where you are?
Yeah, just, we just wanted to show you, you know, you're used to seeing so many sites that don't, aren't kept the way that you think they should be, and that are kept with, you know, yeah, it's in good conditions, that's why I want to show you.
So one of the comments yesterday was that the drawings don't reflect all of the signs on the site. So it doesn't mean necessarily that the signs are non-compliant if you didn't total up to your maximum, right?
We're going to double check that.
Right, okay. So whatever it is that you, they want to try to retain, then they need to amend the calculation sheet.
We'll do that.
Right, okay. And the drawings to show that the signs are, okay. All right, I think that's it. Are there any speakers on this? All right, so I think that's really the only outstanding issue, so you're going to coordinate over that?
We'll coordinate that, and if you want to give us a date sometime in January, we're happy to come back, whatever fits your schedule.
I think we can close this, because it's not, you're going to bring the signs into compliance.
Yeah, we're going to bring the signs into compliance, we're going to give you photographs of that.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda? Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
And, and you'll provide also, I mean, you'll submit these photos, but the whole idea is you're going to be providing photos that show specific compliance with fencing, landscaping, and the concrete bumpers, which I guess I don't know what this is.
Correct. Well, this gives you the fencing and the landscaping too, but then it shows you the bumpers are in place. We'll give you as one concise with a cover letter that clearly wraps it all up in a nice, tidy package. We'll give you a key on the photos, so that way you can tell what you're looking at, so you don't have to study it.
Okay, good. What's a, thank you. So... Maybe January 30th, is that?
Whatever pleases the board, that's fine for us. The station is operating, it's not, there's no rush to get things done on our side, other than the term has expired. It's just substantial, but we're not being violated for it, so.
Okay, so January 30th was the submission?
Thank you, I'll submit it.
On, one, two, three, on January 10th?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, 41850BZ, 7369217th Street, 73-36 Springfield Boulevard, 2190274th Avenue, and 73-10220th Street, Queens.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Stuart Klein, on behalf of the respondent. I submitted last week a purchase order between the Windsor...
What? No, 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 what? A purchase order? We didn't get anything.
I emailed it on Thursday, I believe.
You did not, I asked that you submitted to submit, to have it formally entered into the record.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You sent me an email, and then I said, I emailed you and said, please submit if you want to have this go to the board, and you said you were well aware of the protocol.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it had been submitted, I...
No, yeah, that was...
Okay, because I sent it in on submit with the entire package. But that package did consist of, and I certainly will do it, that package consisted of a purchase order between my client and the American Green Turf care people for $75,000 to clean up and dispose of approximately 30, 30... I'm sorry. I'm sorry, 30, 30-yard dumpsters at a minimum. And it's my understanding that a cleanup process is taking place. If you'll remember from the original application, this is an area approximately 1,723 feet long by 100 feet wide. The original ABRIS report from 2015 indicated there are approximately 20 dead trees in the area with a minimum diameter of six inches, breast height, and they have to be removed, cut down, and taken out with the debris. So that's in the process of being done.
So do you have a copy of what you said you submitted?
Yes.
Can you give that to us?
Sure, of course.
So this is a June 2017 purchase order?
That's correct. The original contact was made May 22nd. It was estimated by American Turf that it would take approximately 30 dumpsters to pull the stuff out, and they are, to the best of my understanding, I was told on Friday, that they are working in order to accomplish this as soon as possible.
When was, when was this signed? It's just, it's dated from the contractor as having been created on June...
There's an affidavit in there indicating that it was signed in June, and the affidavit is from the manager of the location.
So, so when did the work start?
I believe the work started approximately a month ago. I don't know the exact date, I can give that to you when I, when I call the manager.
Okay, find out the exact date.
Sure.
I'm not sure, it's a little confusing to us, because neighbors are complaining that nothing's being done, and you would think if there's workers cutting down trees and dumpsters, that there would be noise.
Yeah, have those trees been cut, or there will be?
They will be, according to the ABRIS, in order to preserve the location...
So what is being removed then?
The debris is being removed, the debris is throughout the location. One of the problems is, if you remember, the ABRIS report from 2015 indicated that the southern boundary has a lot of vines in it, which is acting as a sound deadener for the people on 77th Avenue. And while they remove things, they have to be very careful to try and maintain the vines in the condition they currently are.
Okay, so let's see. The affidavit says, "The Apartment Corporation engaged the services of American Green Turf Care with its main office in Best Page, New York, to perform the cleanup." This is an affidavit from an owner's rep. "An initial proposal was received from Green Turf on May 24, 2017. The Board of Directors approved the engagement of Green Turf at its next regularly scheduled board meeting, and a purchase order was generated on June 19, 2017. Green Turf commenced the cleanup shortly thereafter. A next here too, as Exhibit C, are copies of various pictures of the buffer zone depicting the conditions existing therein as of November 11. While significant progress has been made in the cleanup, additional time is required to complete." It's my understanding that on November 21, the Apartment Corporation is required to advise the BSA of the progress made. Okay. Okay. And you don't know, other than it's a little confusing, because if they've started work and there's no comments from community, anybody want to see this one? No comments from community about work having started, that's, that's confusing.
I can't reconcile it too, but...
Can you get a time, yeah, timeline from the contractor?
I was told that it would probably take, assuming the weather's okay, approximately three months, but I'll get a better timeline on it.
Three months?
Yes.
But they started a month ago.
I, well, I believe they started a month ago, but I think they started earlier than that.
They started shortly after the purchase order was...
Yeah, that's very confusing.
Yes.
July.
Yeah. Right, if we go back to the affidavit. So, Mr. Klein, so the thing is, when you come here and you're representing your client, if you don't actually know the specifics of the situation, you need to bring the client here, because for you to say, "I think, I'm not sure, I'll find out," isn't actually helpful in these hearings. And you, you basically contradicted the affidavit of your client. So it said, "Green Turf commenced the cleanup shortly thereafter," thereafter being June 19th, right?
Yes, mm-hmm.
So you told us just now that they started a month ago.
No, I was told you that, I was told last week when I submitted this, that they, they started approximately once ago, a month ago. Obviously, either I misinterpreted, or I was given the wrong information.
So no more hearings in any case, where you come and you just kind of wander around the, trying to figure out how to respond? We need people who have the facts. So you have to come with your, with the client, with the owner's rep who knows the situation. Okay? Because it's frustrating, not just to the board, but to the public who comes here about these cases.
Understood.
All right. And then the other thing is, of course, it's not just cleanup, there are requirements on this buffer zone, I believe it needed to be fenced, that there can't be any furnishings in it at all. There's complaints from neighbors that it's being used for trash. There was a photograph submitted by at least one...
Did you see the photos?
Let me finish my sentence. There was a photograph submitted with just one, from at least one neighbor, but it might have been more than one neighbor, that shows a pile of trash bags all collected on one corner, and that's not obviously how, for anyway, that's not how trash in a big complex like that should be managed. It should be going into some official dumpster that then it gets picked up by Department of Sanitation. And so, again, another behavior that's, that needs to be modified.
Well, may I respond? I'd like to warn the board that this is 498 two-family houses. It is an enormous location, it's 1.7 million square feet of space. You could take a photo just about anywhere on this property and find some problem. The area we're talking about is 1,723 feet long by 100 feet wide. It is more than, it's approximately three or four acres. This was built and is standing where it is now since 1952. Obviously, there was an accumulation of problems that was addressed by the board the last time, and they went out, and this is a 70-year-old cooperative that is not a high-end cooperative, they've committed $75,000 so far to do the cleanup. They're doing the best they possibly can. It's all of the problem, is the, is the entirety of the problem going to go away very quickly? No, that's certainly not the case. But they have committed a great deal of money, which they probably are going to have a difficult time covering, to do this. I can show you a picture from just about anywhere in the city that reveal, you know, violation of some law. They're doing this, they're doing this at their own pace, as best they can afford it, and we hope to, hopefully be able to resolve it within a couple of months.
Okay. But just to reiterate, the board had specific conditions, those conditions need to be complied with.
Right, and the...
Independent of how large that buffer area is, that was the deal, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Buffer area is X, it needs to be handled in a certain way, and anything that's not being done in that certain way is not in compliance with the terms of the grant. So it needs to arrive at that spot, and any changes in behavior that are necessary by the management need to be made in order to accomplish that, you know?
And I think the management is...
Saying it's big isn't really a good excuse for not managing a site.
Well, no, nobody uses it as an excuse, I'm just simply suggesting to the board that this is a problem, it's a problem that if, if it exists, has developed over 70 years, and it's not going to go away. And the, and the, this group of people have put together a very, very good, you know, a good deal of money to do this, and that money would otherwise go to improving the buildings, which are now 70 years old. So they have made the commitment, and they are telling the board that they're going to continue through with that commitment, and they just need time to do it.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Those photos that were submitted by the neighbors, were those shared by... I'm wondering if that will help you to kind of direct your applicant to...
All right, we'll email them to you. Yeah. We'll get them to you, right.
Well, if they have, if they have locations, fine, if they don't, then they're kind of...
Right, I mean, I think on both sides, just showing us a photo, like even here, you gave us this photo of a nice...
Yeah, the photos are just to indicate that the stuff that's going to be done, it doesn't have any particular location.
Right.
If you take a look at the ABRIS report, they identified 163 trees, as I said before, 20 of which have to be cut down. And once they do the cleanup, then they'll get a better idea of what has to be done to reinstate the green space as it was intended to be built in 1950.
But when, when photos, both from neighbors and from, from ownership are provided, they should be keyed to a site plan, because we actually have no idea where they're taken. For instance, neighbors submitted photos of kind of messy condi... For instance, neighbors submitted photos of kind of messy conditions. If we knew exactly where they are, then your cleanup crew could go right in and remove that, because I think one of the main sources of the, or causes of the complaints is that it's happening right behind people's houses. And if it were happening on the other side of the buffer area, closer to the development, maybe the people, you wouldn't get the same complaints, because it's not happening right behind my house.
That's entirely true, and interestingly enough, the 50 grant only required us to fence it around the three areas, not on the south side along Seventy-seventh Street. Had that been fenced many years ago, it might not have been the same problem.
Right, right. Okay. All right, so I'll take speakers. Are there any speakers on this? Please come. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes when you start.
Yeah, you know, I have a speech prepared that's...
State your name, please.
I'm Eleanor Skellet. I reside at 7619 to 20th Street, and I represent the Green Belt Neighborhood Alliance to attest to the following. However, I think I need to respond to Mr. Klein's testimony or statements, because, and I can clarify what's happening, because you obviously haven't seen it, nor have you been sent pictures of it. So I can't give the speech in three minutes and do it all, so...
Well, you have three minutes, so you're gonna have to say something.
All right, so let me read my speech, and then I'll send you another email and more pictures. On May 2nd, the WOTC was directed by you to come into compliance with these variants. However, on May 3rd and into May, the WOTC landscapers continue to dump debris into the green space. Almost two decades of ongoing dumping has created conditions requiring weeks of excavator on-site, filling large-capacity dumpsters. Removal of debris did not begin until sometime late October. So that answers one question. The effort is not complete, and the pictures that we submitted clearly illustrate this. In addition, the following violations in the variants still exist. There's a cemented fenced-in area for storage and parking of vehicles behind the garages off 217th Street. A shed and landscaping equipment are also evident in this area. Vehicles continue to be parked in other areas within the green space. With the removal of the debris, it has become evident that trees and plants throughout the green space have been destroyed. There are areas which, because of willful abuse, have been totally denuded. The green space needs to be fully repopulated with indigenous trees. Vines identified in the arborist's report have not been removed and continue to choke and kill the trees. The vines are not giving any shade. The trees are giving shade. The vines are killing the trees, and we submitted some pictures of the vines. For many years, residents of Seventy-seventh Avenue have sporadically requested repair of the chain-link fence placed by Winter Oaks, quote, "along the latlines to the southeast and west." It should only be in three years. Now the fencing is in need of repair because it has not been maintained and was partially removed at 217th Street. Recyclables, which are collected every Wednesday, continue to be stored on the green space at 217th Street, and those are the pictures of the garbage that was submitted. There are no plantings to screen in the parking areas, driveways, and garages. Going forward, the conditions of the variants need to be respected and fully implemented, particularly regarding maintaining the green space and ensuring the health of all vegetation. We were told that the DOB has oversight. However, in the past, the DOB has not been responsive to complaints about noncompliance of the variants. The site survey submitted by WOTC as part of their initial application indicates that the buffer zone to be uniformly 100 feet in depth from the property line of the homes on Seventy-seventh Avenue. We want to point out that the variants did not set the buffer zone at 100 feet, but at, quote, "an additional 50 feet was to be maintained with similar plantings, except for where residential buildings, garages, and parking areas were shown in the original plans." In order to determine compliance, reference to the original plans filed as part of the creation of the variants may be necessary.
Okay, great, that worked, okay.
If you have any other questions about what's going on?
Okay, it's just, I think we got it. They started work in October, which is not June, okay? So the affidavit seems to be false. Nothing like something where you sign something and you make a mis... We can call it a misstatement. But then you sign it and you swear to it.
Implicitly, my statement appears to be accurate.
Yeah, by...
Yeah.
But your client, and I'm just guessing, you prepared the affidavit for your client?
I did not do that.
You did not, okay.
No, no, no.
Okay. All right, so we just need to get going. So the work only started a month ago. You know that there's a big, there's a breadth of things that need to be accomplished. You were told timeline, three months, so that sounds like when you should be coming back here with, showing that basically it's all done. Right? What?
I'm sorry, was there only one speaker? Was there...
Are there other speakers on this?
I thought there were two speakers.
Oh, okay.
If I could get that list...
Sorry.
I mean, I could go over the tape, obviously, but I'll speak to the speaker later today if I get the list.
Well, please speak to the neighbor. That's the nicest way of working, so you wouldn't have had to come to a compliance hearing, right? Would have saved your client money. All right.
Legal fees, yeah.
So let's say, sorry? Yeah, the end of February, because there's off times. Yeah, so February 27 to return here.
Please make sure that all submissions are submitted to submit and not...
I'm sorry, what?
I said, please ensure that all your submissions are submitted to submit, and don't just...
I apologize. I had submitted via the email posting. I thought they had been submitted in the hand.
No, it's not considered an official submission unless it goes to submit@bsa.nyc.gov, which, by the way...
Well, actually, it did go there last week. I submitted it, I have receipt that it was submitted.
Okay, Mr. Klein?
Yes.
You submitted to submit@bsa.nyc.gov, and please notify Mr. Klein.
But I did submit it last week.
Okay. We'll check it, but make sure that we'll...
It was submitted on Thursday. I did it myself.
Okay.
You know what, just follow up with me.
Okay, certainly, certainly, yeah, but it was submitted last week.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so February 27, we'd like to see photos of, progress photos keyed to the site plan by, to give you a little more time for the work, February 13.
Okay, with regard to the site plan, we'll try and put something together. There is, we could not find the original files from 1950, so we'll just use overheads.
No, as part of the original, the application to amend the, to amend this variance, there's a full submission of original drawings.
Well, they were original drawings, they weren't, they didn't include at the time the green space, so we will overlay that onto it.
No, wait a second. So there are many drawings that were submitted in connection with the...
Proposal.
Proposal. Use the one that represents original approval, right? It does...
Do the best we can, sure. We don't have the original approved plans, though, so we'll just cobble together something showing the area in question with the...
Cobble together.
Or you can use...
Well, no, but, yeah, it's true. With this, you could use a Google Earth...
Yeah, we'll use Google Earth.
To show us where you've done, taken the picture from. That's not the same thing as relying on the approved drawings, or what's supposed to be in place.
No, I appreciate that. I'll use the Google overshot, and I'll also use the zoning maps.
And this goes for you also?
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the neighbors' reports, okay? And actually, if you would share each other's email addresses, then you could communicate directly and show where the areas of concern are, where the work is being done. Maybe the work should be done in the areas of concern first. That might make people more comfortable.
I'll try and find some staging timeline to see when the stuff is being done.
Okay, good. Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number ten, I'm sorry.
Yes.
February 27 with a submission of February 13.
February 13.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, apology. Item number 10, 11101BZ, 901 Dittmas Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnik.
It's really 9,001, or 900...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, 9,001 Dittmas.
9001? Thank you.
Oh, it should be 90-01?
It's in Brooklyn. This is in Brooklyn, it's not...
This is Brooklyn.
Never mind. It is on May the first. It is 9,000.
Okay.
Wendy's.
Oh, it should go to Darryl.
It's Darryl's. It's Wendy's.
Hi, Eric Palatnik. Here today on behalf of Wendy's to ask for a renewal of the term and a slight modification to the hours of operation. We just handed up to you some photographs that show you the reimaging that's been done since your last action on it, which has been part of, I'm sure you've noted it, around the country. It's part of Wendy's National Reimaging Program, so that was done, which we're asking you, I guess, to legalize now, so we're showing you that.
I see.
Also, the breaking news of the day, which we will clarify for you in our statement, is the hours of operation. There is no, the exact hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week for the dining room. We're not asking to make it any earlier than that, and it's 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM every day of the week for the drive... 2:00 AM, excuse me.
Let's say that again, let's start again.
It's 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM for the dining room, seven days a week, and the drive-through is 10:00 AM through 2:00 AM, seven days a week for the drive-through. That's a reduction in hours on the drive-through from what was previously approved, which is until 3:00 AM on the weekends. Now, we're asking you to bring that back to reduce the hours.
Okay, so this is like arguably good news for the neighbors. They don't...
Oh, yeah. It's bad news if you like Wendy's.
Right, but I'm concerned more about the neighbors than, yeah, than the Wendy's.
It's good news if you don't like the noise. But there hasn't been, we're not aware of any complaints. Nobody's here, and there were plenty of people here. We've been through this, some of the board members that might have been here through the last iteration, I think it's actually just down to just one now, Commissioner Ollie Brown. But I remember, this is on for a sequence of hearings a few years apart, and the neighbors were here at all those hearings, and they're not here. So that's good news.
Well, in this case, neighbors weren't required to be notified, so unless they were really paying attention to their community board...
That's true.
...those things, they wouldn't know, and that's...
That is true.
Only special people pay attention to all the...
As we all know, right? Yes, that's true. But we haven't, nonetheless, we haven't had any complaints, which is good news. I mean, they're very vocal, and they've been very vocal when the site was being built. We've also passed up to you now plans to show you the queuing for the cars, the reservoir. They're shown in a ghost image in the drive aisle. You could see that. And for those who...
Sorry, 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 where...
That's okay. I don't have the plan in front of me. I gave up all my copies, but the ghost image of the cars in the drive aisle...
Oh, I see, okay.
At the bend. And for those that weren't here the first iteration years ago, the parking area that gets closed off is depicted on the, it'll be at the top of the plan, I think, but it's that jut-out area that borders the residences at the back. That's where it's supposed to be closed off there, so that was the condition of the last approval, so that there'd be no interference with the neighbors after the drive-through from the drive-through, so nobody would pull in there to listen to the radio or anything. We did hear your comments on landscaping, and we spoke to our client who's here today, and we told them that your views on landscaping are quite strong, and we noted to him what you called that yesterday, which is the portion down at the right-hand side of the property.
Upper right, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think I brought the plan, be easier, right? On East 91st Street, in that corner there, where it's catty corner with Lot 60. I think the board had some comments about the landscaping over there.
Right, so that, this drawing is the proposed drawing, the approved drawing showed landscaping in that little, I don't know what shape that is.
Yeah, from View 10. We have landscaping there. Admittedly, it could be a little bit denser than it is. It's low-lying landscaping, which, that was the discussion that was had with the neighbor at that time, was to have that as low-lying landscaping over there. They didn't want big trees. We actually brought a copy of one of our submissions from the board from back then when that was highlighted, if I could find it, but nonetheless, that was planted like that in request to the neighbors. Everybody tried to be very responsive to the neighbors, but if the board deemed something else more desirable, we'd have...
It's just, it's not functioning to shield the neighbors at all from cars.
They did not want it. If I could, fortunately, at least you did such a good job earlier today, you gave me that section, if I could find it here.
That's the part of the fence, this area is what I mean, it's not...
This might help.
But there's also this kind of, in the photograph, this strange space between the fence and the plant, and... Yeah.
Give me, give me, give me.
Yeah, no, we spoke to the engineer. The landscaper, when they designed it, everybody took a little bit of liberty to just create a runoff spot between the fence there. The water, we could surely make that soil if you wanted. What I passed up to you just now, as you can see, item three, which is, we highlighted, was just our recitation of the May 26th, in our May 10th hearing, I guess it was, of 2011, where we actually, more specific than I ever thought I would be, where we actually wrote, in close, please find photographs, showing the installation of the low-lying shrubbery we're talking about today, along the property line adjacent to Lot 60. That's the guy, or the woman, or the person that's at the home on that side. This was the neighborhood that appeared at the last hearing and spoke to the effect, and that they did not desire large trees here. So there was a lot, the first iteration of this, that whole border of the property was three hearings. There was a lot of discussions. And then every time we'd plant landscaping, it would be stolen, so we'd go to take pictures, and then the board would go back out, and the board would say, "You didn't plant it." We'd say, "We did." And then we planted again, it would be stolen again. Kept getting stolen. Now they're all there.
Now you're okay.
We counted all the trees, there are ten, right?
There's 11.
11, we counted them all just to make sure, but yeah, that's, it was a problem at the beginning. There was a lot of discussion on the, on that border of the property, on the drive-through, on the chain. It was all done with a lot of discussion, so...
With the neighbors.
With the neighbors, with the board. But we're happy to do whatever this board feels is right.
Well, if the neighbors specifically didn't want large, these are to protect the neighbors, assuming the neighbors want this thing, and normally the neighbors don't.
They didn't want it there. If I recall, I think their problem was that it was going to get all moldy, and it was going to be more trouble with the roots and the leaves, and they didn't really care, it wasn't going to block anything.
They didn't want the leaves on there, they would have to sweep it up.
Yeah, they would have to sweep it up. It was more maintenance for them, they didn't really...
The structure...
I mean, they sort of accepted their lot in life, that that location, that they were next to Wendy's, and they were happy that it was being built, it was rebuilt at the time in 2001, it was being built brand-new, and they've done a fantastic job of operating it. The operator's here now, it's no longer Wendy's corporate operating it, and as you can see from the pictures, they do a really nice job maintaining their site.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any comments about that? I mean, if the neighbor wanted it, the neighbor... Yeah, yeah. Okay, so are there any speakers on this? Okay, so then I don't really think there are any open issues, right? Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Thank you for being so responsive.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asher?
Aye.
And then a motion to grant on condition, but it's really basically that all the prior conditions remain in place unless specifically superseded. That should be just the running theme on all of our resolutions, because sometimes people say, "Oh, but you didn't specifically repeat that one." So, and that also the BSA calendar number and conditions are shown in the CFO, which they are already on the CFO, so as you update your CFO, travel that with...
Make sure we bring everything with it on the new one.
Right, okay. So on that motion, a motion to grant?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11, 25602BZ, 160 M. Lane Street.
And I need to refuse from this? Bring me my things with me.
Good morning, Commissioners Shelley Friedman, representing the applicant. We were in attendance at yesterday's executive session. We know that there are some questions coming our way. I just want to try and provide just a little bit of background about the general application. This is a request to extend the time of completion by four years to approximately May 1, 2020. The original...
Can you speak up?
Of course, sorry. The original application, the original variance approval was in 2003. It was a use variance for a very large warehouse close to the Red Hook waterfront. It was, in its day, a very controversial case. Although it was just a use variance, it spawned an Article 78 upon the approval of the variance in 2003. That extended the time of, for completion to May 1, 2012. In February, and that was by a previous owner. Present ownership acquired the property six months later, in December of 2012, which means that the original extension that we received was already six months old. But from the time they acquired the property until the expiration of the current deadline, which was May 1, 2016, they have been actively involved in trying to return this property to economic viability. There have been a series of letters of substantial compliance, all of which have been geared toward making the property a better property, a property that could be more marketable for what was evolving in Red Hook, a property that could be more financially successful, given the significant change in the real estate market by 2009, when the litigation was over. The property had considerably deteriorated over the course of the past decade. Hurricane Sandy took its toll with inundation of the ground floors of this building. You see on page, you see on page seven of the Statement of Facts, the photograph of the property as, I'm sorry, page nine of the Statement of Facts, Figure 1, a photograph of the property as it was when acquired by the present applicant, and two pages later, you see its current condition in this past September. So you can tell by the photograph, the photographs, that there's been a substantial amount of work on the property as of our original application date. Present ownership had expended $35 million to try and complete this building. That number is currently in the low 70, $70 million of expenditures. The building still has a significant amount of interior work. The long deterioration of this building since the original grant has taken a toll. As I said, the letters of substantial compliance have been trying to reposition this building for completion. I won't go into the details of each one of those unless you wish, but the overall trend in these letters of compliance is that the original grant has been observed, that the actual number, the square footage of residential, which was the grant itself, has gone down. The number of parking spaces has gone down. In all respects, this is a lesser grant, this would now, this variance is a lesser variance than the originally approved variance. And all told, the owner is interested in completing this project and getting it back to market. The facts provide a significant amount of details regarding the individual anecdotes that have gotten in the way of completing this project on a, within the time, I won't even say on a timely basis, within the time period allowed, which expired in May of 2016. Those involve a substantial amount of remedial work on the deterioration of the structure. There have been several building code revisions in the ensuing years, which required backing up and reconsidering the plans of the building. There was a, you can see from these photographs, 80% of these elevations are glass, and the one contractor that sorely disappointed in this process was the glass manufacturer. The windows arrived, they weren't out the right windows, they were not in the right shape, they had to be modified on-site. All of that contributed to the delay. And of course, the repositioning of the building, as evidenced by the letters of substantial compliance, also provide a narrative for a building significantly in the works, but never quite, never completed by the date it needed to be completed by. That's the general narrative of this project. I'm happy to go into greater detail on it, or we can get in directly to the, I know the vice chair had some questions that she wanted to see clarified.
Yes, I mean, you're right that the approval process from the timeframe of 2003 to what it is, it's much less. My questions were more directed towards the documents that were submitted, which had to do with minor modifications, and I wanted clarity on it, and wanted to make sure that what you're submitting in terms of floor area is consistent with what was approved in 2015. Based on my reading of it, it seemed it was not, so that's one clarification I would want. And the second part was more, you know, I'm glad that the work is progressing, but in the process, there has been issues raised with regards to construction. I just want to make sure those are being addressed actively, rapidly, and that should not, in any way, you know, our hearing here is not stopping you from doing that, and just some clarity on the stop work.
We have, we have the people...
I wanted that for our record, and if you could clarify.
We have the people here to answer those questions. Just as a, as a general qualifier, the original team that brought this variance to the Board of Standards and Appeals in 2002, the architect, the contractor, land use lawyer, et cetera, have not had any involvement in this project in a very long time. We certainly stand behind all of our numbers as we have submitted them from date of acquisition, 2014 forward, but we are unable to verify fully some of the earlier numbers.
And I'm only questioning from April 2015, that was the last substantial complaint to the present.
Fine, we have, we have those professionals here. I'm going to ask the project architect, Blue Arch Architect, to, Blue Ark, excuse me, to come up and answer your questions regarding the floor area, and then our owners' representative can address the violations issue and the process, the DOB process issue.
Good morning, my name is Antonio De Rons, I'm the project architect, architect of the record, 160.
Is that your last name?
De Rons, so D is in David, I, then there's a space, O R O, N is in Nancy, Z is in Zebra, O.
Thank you.
So if you can walk us through the present, the minor modifications?
Absolutely. The modifications, as you said, are minor. We have the addition of a generator at the northwest corner of the site, right south of the existing transformer already installed. We have eliminated the cellar plan, as it no longer exists. We have, in fact, filled the crawl space that was existing. There are some minor modifications at the ground floor, which are so minor that are not really important to mention, but we're talking about moving walls inches here and there.
Do you have modifications?
Exactly. The same issue.
And it doesn't change the total number of commercial?
We never changed the total number approved in 2015, as it pertains to the overall floor area approved, and the specific floor area approved for commercial use and residential use. We have not changed the number of parking spaces as they pertain to both commercial and residential uses. We have not changed the total number of residential units either. And the modifications which we have made to, that are more significant, are to what we refer to as the super penthouse, also referred to as floors 7, 8, and 9. These floors already existed in 2015, in the approved plans by this commission in 2015. The changes are specifically the addition of floor area and the addition of one level to this unit. However, there are, there still are several thousand square feet of unused deductions between quality housing, low-density corridor deductions, and mechanical deductions. As such, we were able to increase the specific floor areas of that residential unit and add at the seventh floor two communal areas, two amenity areas for the residents at the seventh floor.
Okay, so just so I understand, in the previous approved plan, that's from 2015, there were two mechanical spaces?
Yes, there were two cooling towers.
Right, and those are now proposed to become the tenants' recreation area?
That is correct.
And in the middle where the tenants' recreation area was, is going to become the penthouse C3 unit?
There was a small enclosed area in, there is basically a small building on top of the larger building. At the seventh floor, there is still an elevator lobby area, which was, prior to our submittal, was slightly larger. We transferred that floor area to the unit and converted the duplex approved in 2015 into a triplex.
I think that's where I'm finding a disconnect.
Okay.
Because I was going through floor by floor, and I was fine all the way up to the sixth floor. It's only at the seventh floor where I did not notice any units on the seventh floor. It was just the mechanical spaces and the tenants' unit. And unfortunately, the plans that were submitted as part of the application do not show that tower section, the floors above the 7, 8, 9. So I'm just guessing what's there based on the section, and...
We do have plans, if I recall correctly.
It was not submitted with the documents. I'm just going by what was submitted, so...
Understood, understood, understood. However, we did submit, we do have floor area plans which were submitted and approved by the DOB. We have mapped every single mechanical deductible space. As I said, there are unused, several thousand square feet of unused deductions, and we thought it would be...
And you're using those unused deductions for...
Indeed, indeed, absolutely. And we have several thousand more, of which we don't know what to do. Actually, we can't use them because...
And the unit counter, is it, does it increase from 70 to 71, or?
No, no. The number of units, nothing has changed as it pertains to what was previously deliberated. In fact, that unit, that very unit increases in floor area, sorry, but it was already referenced in the submittal in 2015, and I think that there is a note in, I looked at it before, coming this A7, there is a...
What's on the approved?
There is a, it's referenced as a duplex. I think it's Note 3 on that drawing.
Can I ask you to approach the...
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. It says down here, residential duplex unit should be located above tenant recreational facility within the existing enclosure. Okay. That's such fine print. Okay.
We did it on purpose. Actually, that's not even my drawing, actually.
Okay. All right. You're all okay?
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for clarifying that.
With regard to the violations, the current state of the violations, I'd like to ask Richard Murdock, who was the owners' rep on the project since 2014. He can give you the current status.
Good morning, my name is Richard Murdock, M U R D O C K.
So if you can just give us an update in terms of...
There were some civil penalties that have been paid. You'll see at the DOB website that that red banner has been taken off. There is currently a yellow banner, that is a vacate order, that was levied in 2009, and we have tried to get that taken off. We were told by DOB that it'll come off when we get our TCO. I believe that vacate order was due to, was from the prior owners in regards to unsafe condition with the sidewalk shed and certain security and electrical lighting matters underneath the sidewalk shed. We have a permitted sidewalk shed now. There is 24/7 security on the site, and according to DOB, again, that'll come off at the time that we get the TCO. There is currently a red banner with a stop work order that was just given by the best squad about a week ago. Everything's been remedied, all the work has been remedied, and we are scheduled to have the best squad down there. Doubtful tomorrow, being that the holiday is this week, most likely it'll come on Monday, and it all should be lifted.
You have a scheduled appointment with them?
We have a scheduled appointment, if I'm not mistaken, for Monday.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. And I just, I was looking through the environmental, and I believe there is an above-ground storage tank, which you are, some notes with regards to an administrative closure that you need to do with an above-ground storage tank.
Yes, we submitted a letter on that. Richard, is that something you can? There is a memo in the record from Langen, who was, who, in response to the NOC, we submitted to explain that situation. There were some references to an underground tank that, my recollection is, no one could ever substantiate, and that in fact, the existing conditions, the water conditions underneath this site strongly suggest that there was probably never a tank there. But that's all, that's all in the Langen, that's all in the Langen material submitted.
Do you have any questions?
No.
So, is there another hearing?
Oh, you're all satisfied?
Yeah. Unless you want the best squad?
Do you want the best squad? That's up to you. Ah, the pressure of being vice chair. So you, you could close it, and then once you get something from the best squad, vote on it in two weeks or something?
Yeah, I would like to just get a sign up on the best squad, but outstanding issue.
Okay.
We can close on it, but we'll just wait on that?
Can we set, can we set a date?
Yes, as soon, we could set it. It would just be a decision date.
It would be a decision.
And only, only because there are financial considerations that we're trying to meet here, and since we don't have to submit anything remedial, I would like to ask for that, except for the administrative notification that the best squad has signed off, I'd like to ask for the shortest possible time.
Oh, yeah, that would be the intention. So, they're coming on Monday, so could we do December, what's, December 5? I'm sorry, what's? December 5 is the next.
December 5?
We could do, we could do the 5th?
Can we do December 5?
Thank you very much, that'd be very helpful.
And just let us know, moment.
As soon as you have the best squad.
You can count on it.
So, motion to close?
Motion to close. Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nasir Sheta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And this is scheduled for...
Decision on December 5.
Okay.
Uh...
Do you want to have a date?
Mm-hmm. Okay. You're welcome. I put an A here. What's that one?
Oh, he's not voting, so.
What's a date?
On December 5.
Oh, okay. What's the decision? Really, is it this one? Okay, fine.
Item number 12, 18909BZ, 3067 Richmond Avenue, Staten Island.
Hello, Jessica Rubinstein, on behalf of Eric Palatnick, PC. Just to clarify the current status of the work to be completed and what we're actually asking for in this application. So this application is just an extension of time, no amendment is sought here. The term expired on May 10, 2017. We requested the maximum extension of four years merely as a safety net. However, all work has been completed, and the fire department came for an inspection on October 18. The mosque is just waiting for a letter of approval from the fire department. And in terms of the valet parking, the mosque has members of the congregation volunteer to help with that.
So with respect to that huge safety, I mean, all the work's done now, right?
All the work's done.
So a four-year extension seems unnecessary, you know?
We'd be okay with a shorter term, you should just...
Like two, maybe?
Two's fine.
Two to just allow for who knows what kind of problem with the CFO?
Exactly, to accommodate any unforeseen delays.
Okay, all right. Are there any speakers on this? All right, does anybody else have comments? So I recommend a two-year extension, right? Okay, so...
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
From May, is, from May 10th, that's normal, right? So...
So just to note, if the chair makes a motion for two years, it'd be from May 10th?
Yeah, I'm aware.
Okay, just making sure that's okay for you.
Thank you.
Like a year and more, six months or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry?
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
So a motion to grant for a two-year extension.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is a two-year grant.
Item number 13, 4210VZ, 2170 Mill Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Lisa Arantia from Acreman LLP, on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a, an extension of time to complete construction. Construction has been delayed due to the difficulty in obtaining project financing. The variance was granted in May of 2013 to allow construction of a multifamily residential building in an R31 district, partly within R31C22. The lot is, and a deep lot, it's got 100 feet of frontage on Mill Avenue and a depth of 460 feet. It's currently improved with a vacant one-story, pre-1930s industrial building. It's got a 1962 CVO for a woodworking shop and storage. Currently used, the open areas are used for storage of motor vehicles. The variance was granted to allow a development that would offset the costs associated with the unique hardships, which include the deep lot condition, that the premises was surrounded by uses that are incompatible with a low-density residential development, environmental remediation that would be required and poor soil quality and high water table. Mill Basin is a desirable residential area. The applicant has approached several financing brokers to secure financing and has been told that financing is difficult because of the low number of dwelling units allowed and because of the adjacent industrial and auto storage yards to the north and west. Because the adjacent properties affect demand and marketability, it's believed that the conversion of properties to the west, there are two properties right now who have active permits to convert from warehouse to school, and another property, it's an NB site for faculty and staff housing.
So these community... What are the addresses of those properties?
So they're on the same block as the site.
Right.
One of them is, is Lot 1096, that's 2150 Mill Avenue. The second lot is 1091, that's 2186 Mill Avenue.
Sorry, what's the second lot? Lot 1091?
1091.
1091.
So it's believed that when these projects advance...
What's the block number?
8470.
8470.
8470. As those projects move forward, the applicant will be better, be in a better position to secure financing because the area will be transitioning into a residential-friendly use. The applicant has also recently been approached by two potential development partners, and this applicant has experience with developing residential properties. They've developed 300 units in Staten Island. So it's believed that this, with, with a grant of an additional four years, the applicant will preserve its right to develop at a time where the, the character of the neighborhood will be, be more appropriate for the proposed residential use.
Do you have any information about the permits on those other two lots that you say are...
They're active permits, they're open.
Do you have copies of the permits or DOB anything otherwise?
I could submit those today. I don't have copies with me.
I mean, you saw the active, I'm just trying to get on...
Yeah, there's an O on 1091 to convert warehouse to school, and there's an NB on 1096.
They, they pulled their permits?
Yeah, they have permits. Well, I'm sorry, one is in disapproved status.
This is Brooklyn.
Oh, this is, sorry, this is Brooklyn.
Yeah. One, one is in disapproved status. I don't know which one that is exactly.
It's in disapproved, so they don't have active permits?
Yeah, but they've filed, one has an active permit.
So it's 8470, 1096. Sorry, block 8470, 1096?
8470, 1096 and 1091.
And 1096?
There's a rear, there's a, on one of those lots is a rear, rear building and a front building.
Installation of fence? Okay, we have an approved, oh, it's a disapproved NB. As of November 17th. So no, no permits on 109, on 1096. Though they certainly have applied. I'm so, okay, so I guess you need to supply more for...
Oh, wait. Granted.
No, the zoning study, zoning approval. The zoning diagram was approved.
Oh.
So that may be a precursor to finally getting approval because it was just approved, right? 11 something. 1116 was when it was submitted. It says granted 1025, I, I think that just means that the ZD1 is submitted and...
Oh.
Or the zoning, or they've received zoning approval. Yeah. Okay. And then the other one is 10...
1091.
Sorry, just a second, we need to... Okay, that one. No work. This is an alteration type. I don't see an approval on 1091.
Should be an O1 there for conversion.
Oh, okay, so as of October 13th, it was disapproved. I think because there was an audit. It says... I don't know what it is, though. There's no... Yeah, so it's a little bit hard for us to do this on the fly. I wish you'd brought in the materials. Because the concern really is if you're going to wait for 15 years for the neighborhood to come around, you know, that's sort of a, a very passive application. Does other people feel...
This is only the first extension.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, and they state that they are going to move forward. So being that we have extended other projects more than once, sometimes several times, I don't think that their request is unreasonable.
Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? So if you could, just to kind of close up the record, you can do this, I'm just thinking, just to submit copies of the, the approved, the, the status of those neighboring projects because you mentioned it in the record, so just to have that follow-up. So I'd, I'd say like we can consider them submitted as part of this because it's public information that we could also add to the record. So if you could just today, make sure that council receive, or that submit and council receives a copy of those, the applications for those two sites, then that way we have backup for what's stated here at the hearing.
Do you feel comfortable voting on something you haven't seen?
No, we've seen it.
You saw it on the...
I've seen it online, but there isn't anything in the record. It's just us looking at data online. Yeah. So, but if you could do that today so that it's all happening at the same day, we'll consider it... Oh, yeah, can we do second call?
Can you, can you arrange to have the submission done in the next couple of hours and then you can come back and get a vote?
Oh, that's great. Okay.
Let's do that.
All right, then, so second call on this, but there are no speakers, right?
So why don't you close?
Okay, thank you.
So we could close now and put it on? Oh, okay, so for a motion to close?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
So I stay for a second call and, and back up?
Yes, so essentially, you know, call your office, have them just submit that information with a cover letter.
When you're ready, let us know.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Right.
CC me as well.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
You let me know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Zoning calendar? Item number 14, decision items, 33014VZ, 1746, 21st Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, still Moshe Friedman for Lira Altman.
She wanted to defer decision.
Because of the building department, there's no waiting from some...
Yeah, so we can put this on for, because she's deferred a number of times, I want to give her enough time for this to really be taken care of, so end of January, January 30th, for decision, deferred decision. And I, there are no submissions. It was really just waiting for whatever the outcome of whatever's going on at the building.
Determination at the building.
We don't actually even know what the specifics are. She hasn't shared that with us. Okay?
It has to do with which code, 68, 2014. So let, let them work it out.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. So it's just January 30th for deferred decision, okay?
Continued hearing items, item number 15, 27015VZ, 338 DeVos Street, Brooklyn.
Still good morning, Moshe Friedman for Friedman PE. It's still, we still have 10 minutes. Okay, so the main, you wanted to hear, the financial consultant is here and he'll speak to you about whatever.
And then we still were, oh, before you go, we were still waiting on DEP responses, right?
Yeah, everything is, yeah, everything is in, we, any day now, it should be coming, 10 days or five days?
Sorry, can you just go?
December 12th.
So we're still waiting for DEP?
DEP, no matter what.
No matter what?
We're still on secret hold.
We're hoping for December 12th.
Yeah, so we can clean up the, the financials, I know.
Yes. Okay.
State your name on the record, Mr. Vargas?
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Vargas. I'm here on behalf of City Analytics, prepared the economic analysis for 338 DeVos Street. There was a comment made about our vacant sales adjustment grid, that we should be displaying the average or the adjusted price statistics, which is absolutely correct, so we can certainly modify that. The minimum, maximum, and average adjusted prices should be displayed on, on that sheet.
And you should be using your adjusted average and not your unadjusted average to calculate your site value.
That's right. I believe we did, although I think we may be off by $2 per square.
Yeah, which is your unadjusted average.
Right.
So it's like you just took the wrong number from the wrong column.
Got it. I believe there's a question about the apartment sizes and the apartment rents. The building, the total building area is 6389 square feet. The total gross area rentable is, or the total gross area is 5952. And then the total rentable we have is 4736 square feet.
If you add up the apartment square footages on the plan, you have 5,435 square feet that's rentable.
Does that include the two seller levels?
That's, yeah, that's everything. And now I have to go into it, but that's the number you should be using because that's, that's what you're renting.
Right, okay, so the two seller, the two seller levels are 350 square feet each.
I think that's what puts you up to the 54.
Okay. So we, we'll modify that, I think it's just a matter of illustrating the right number. But as far as the rental analysis and the rent applied, the first, the, the two first-floor apartments are separated between above-grade space and below-grade space.
Right, right, yeah. Nothing that, the reason why I said that in a nutshell, the financials were fine is because none of these statements are going to throw it one way or the other.
Right.
I just wanted the record corrected so it actually reflects your project.
Okay.
And the last thing is the office leases.
Okay.
Yeah, so you...
So as far as the, I think the comment was about the difference again in, in terms of what the building size is and what we're calculating as the rentable square footage.
Yes.
And I think I'll have to take a second look at the plans, but I think that is incorporating a loss factor. If you're, the, the building is 3,200 as a box, we're...
We are not looking at loss factors here.
Okay.
You've literally got a box and you've got a door that opens onto an expansive rectangle.
Right.
Just use the whole space. As I said, it does not change your underlying, you know, conclusion.
Got it. And anything else?
That's it, that's all. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so...
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess we need to know how much time, but at the same time, we need DEP and so that certainly puts us into at least the end of January, right?
What if they get the sign off December 12th? That's the hearing date.
That's cutting it...
On December 12th?
No, because that means we need a submission on the financials three weeks before.
We can ha...
How long will it take you?
Less than two weeks.
I don't even have a calendar. For me, it's going to take three minutes. Oh, really? No, 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 that's not the calendar. I don't even have the calendar for...
This is going to be closed?
Yeah. I don't know that it can't, can it be closed? It can be closed because this is cleanup work. Oh, but we don't, we don't have seeker sign off, we can't, we can't close it.
You could do January...
Yeah, I, I don't, I feel like that's cutting it too tight.
We could do January 9th since it's just a decision.
It's not.
It's not, it's not.
Financials and it's... Three minutes and then DEP.
And there's DEP. So, but we could try. If it were... Sorry, one second. So January 9th, we could put it on January 9th, but let's, let's go backwards. That's a December 20th submission, but that's not a very...
She said she could do it very quickly.
I could do this fast. This is just cleanup, really. I've actually made new calculations based on the corrections, so it's just making sure that they get those boxes. So how about we do this to make life a little bit easier on those who might actually go on a vacation or something like that? December 13th submission, that gives you, not quite a month, but anyway. And then of course, DEP sign off is whenever it is, right? It could be the day before the hearing.
It should, it should be. I mean, everything is in and it's not really a problem, it would just clean up. One of the things they complained about was on the EAS. The EAS form says the floor area, and as an engineer, I, floor area means floor area, it doesn't include the seller. So I had two different numbers, floor area and growth floor area. Or gross area. They wanted it all as gross. It was minor things, it shouldn't be a problem.
Right, okay. But all right, but it still holds the same because December 12th is too tight.
All right, so January 9th?
So January 9th and a December 13th submission.
Are we closing or are we keeping?
No, we cannot close because we don't have secret determination.
Is it possible maybe to close and grant? Is it possible maybe to close and grant?
It's always possible.
It's called a closing vote.
It's always possible. And yes, it's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Item number 16, item number 16, 20161219 B.C., on 20161220A, 7345 Myrtle Avenue, Queens.
Richard Lobel, Michelle Lobel, P.C. for the applicant, good morning, for five seconds. Okay. Chair, we had representative at the executive session, as the board is aware, we corrected as an administrative matter the notice issue, and also made the subsequent changes to the building layout in order to respond to the board's comments. The building was moved back towards the lot line on the north side of the property, thus removing the need for the general city law waiver, so, and, and in addition, I know that the board had comments with regards to placement of street trees. Victor Faletti, the project architect, is with me today, we have copies of the survey, but we can point out that in line with D O T requirements regarding placement of trees in relation to the corner, as well as with regards to a hydrant and to a bus shelter, the tree placement, as is now represented on the, on the plans, is, is what is available to us.
Okay, so there's only one tree, and it's right at the property line edge, right? So it's at the, and then you also have a distance from the corner, is that?
Correct.
What's the quarter, maybe?
Victor, can you come up for a second?
Yeah.
State your name on the record.
Victor Faletti.
Okay. Really for a tree.
Latest tree planting standards, City of New York Parks and Recreation, require a minimum distance of 30 feet to a, in, street intersection.
Okay.
Also, cannot plant within bus stops, and minimum distance from fire hydrant to the edge of a pit is three feet, and the pit size would be approximately four by 10 feet in this area.
Okay, so it's a fire hydrant, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one, I'm sorry, one correction, minimum distance to the corner of a street intersection is 30 feet.
Right.
Center line, sorry.
That's what you said.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, to the center line of the street.
Yeah, center line of the tree, correct.
So when you, can you show your plot, when you measure to the center line of the street, 30?
Center line of the tree.
Oh, the tree.
Yes, to the intersection of the street.
And the intersection is at the curb edge?
No, it would be.
What was considered the intersection?
Intersection of the two street lines.
Oh, street lines, okay, so it's property lines.
Property lines, yes.
So it's 30 feet, yeah.
So this is 53, so this is 30.
40 feet, yeah.
I thought you said 30.
I corrected, it's 40 feet.
Oh, it's 40.
40 feet, yes.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, and that's not possible along Myrtle?
Uh, no, it would, that property dimension is only 35.12 feet.
On 74th.
On 74th, I understand, but on Myrtle?
On Myrtle, we're pretty much entirely within the bus stop in that area, especially 40 feet from the corner.
Okay, so that's 53, so, but, so that's a question, so you get, you have, if it's 40 off of the property line intersection.
Yes.
Right, then you have a total of 53 to the bus shelter.
To the shelter.
Oh, did you actually do a?
It was a survey.
Oh, it was just a survey, okay. So, so it's, so you have 40 to the intersection, where technically you could put one there, but, and not within the bus stop, but it's not, because the bus stop is 53 feet away, right?
That's to the shelter, the stop goes all the way.
The bus stop trails.
Fine to the corner.
Oh, oh, I see, so the bus stop is how far away from, oh, that's what that, wait a minute, where's the bus stop, in terms of the official measurement of the bus stop?
The bus stop goes from the, the pole, which is six feet, four inches from the shelter, and it's the entire corner, all the way to the corner.
Oh, okay, it goes this way. It goes to the corner of 74th, and it goes all the way to the corner.
That's correct.
Oh, well then, that eliminates some trees.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and not within a bus stop, goes to the corner, to the corner, okay. I think we were otherwise good, right? Yes. Financials, we were fine, all right, thank you very much, that's super helpful. Any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair, promotor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commission Artley Brown?
Aye.
Commission Asheta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant?
Chair, promotor?
Aye.
This is to grant only for 20161219 BZ only. You're withdrawing the A case, correct?
Oh, right.
That's correct.
We have to make a motion.
That's a separate, that's a separate one, right?
Because you're withdrawing the G C L.
Yeah, that's correct, for the 201219-BZ.
Only.
Motion to grant.
Yes. Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commission Artley Brown?
Aye.
Commission Asheta?
Aye.
So, and I want to thank you for being so responsive to our comments, that really helps the process.
Thank you, Chair.
I think it's a better building, also.
We agree.
Right, okay, so to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to withdraw 12, sorry, 20161220A, just the G C L. Chair, promotor?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commission Artley Brown?
Aye.
Commission Asheta?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 20164127 BZ, 1547 East 26th Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, before I begin my presentation, I realize that in my submission of the area diagrams, although we did not change anything on the radius diagram, we did not include that in the PDF of the area diagrams. I would like to pass out the radius diagram at this point, it might be an easy, a good reference for what we're going to be discussing. Okay.
And there's also an aerial photograph of the neighborhood, which might be.
Thank you. Thank you. Give us the hand ring.
I attended the executive session, and I'd like to address three points that were raised. First is the actual design solution and the floor area, floor layout and area of the building, whether or not that proposal can be in fact accomplished as an alteration and enlargement, and the rear yard issue. As you can see on the radius diagram, this property is sort of in an awkward position. The buildings to the south, six of them, are considered the cottages, they're a unique building type to the area, they're very small buildings, they're on 50-foot lots, we have a 60-foot lot. They're the only buildings in this area that are of that nature, of that architectural character, they're all the same. Immediately to the north, we have the six-story brick building, the apartment building, which is right on our property line, with a 15-foot rear yard. And if you look at the rest of the properties in the area, they're all smaller lots, with buildings that were built all around the same time, which are larger than would be permitted by the current zoning. It turns out that within that area, the floor area, there's 34% of that area, the 400-foot area, that are greater than .90, we're asking for a .98. 55 of those lots, 55% of those lots exceed the current zoning, the .60. As far as the lot coverage, we did a study on the lot coverage, which is included now in the zoning study. Our building is asking for a 49, point 49, basically a 49% lot coverage. There are 31% of the properties in the area that exceed 40%, we, we exceeded the, in other words, the study area has 31%, which are above 40%. We did not include all the 40 percentiles. If you include those, it's almost 67% that actually exceed the required 35%, and most of those are in the 38 and 40 percentile coverage rate. There are 18% that are actually 49% coverage or over. So if you look at the general neighborhood, the neighborhood character, you could make the case, or someone could make the case, that these cottages might be out of character for the neighborhood, and although we are trying to respect that streetscape for neighborhood character on East 26th Street, we have addressed that, we have modified the front of the building substantially, we're less than two inches above what the original building was. The soffit will line up with the original, the roof pitch is actually the same, and what we've done is articulated the front of the building, so that the widths underneath the hip roofs actually mimic the cottages to the south. Obviously, the building to the north of us is right on the street line, it's right on our line, that's an urban, if you look at, what I'd like to do also, is possibly, if you could look at the photos, maybe we could stay in the photos for a few seconds, and I could bring you sort of to a, I guess, a walk around of the neighborhood, if any of the commissioners have not been there.
Photos that you submitted, you mean, or just this aerial photo?
Yes, we have 40, no, 42 photographs, street photographs, that have previously been submitted.
Sorry, when did you submit those photographs?
Should have been the last submission.
The last submission.
We had initial photographs, and then we supplemented them in the last submission.
The one that was for this hearing?
Yes, and we have, we should have 42 photographs, quite a bunch of photographs, which are all notated on the area diagram.
Sorry, sorry, on the area diagram, so we have the radius diagram, that has a number of various maps, we have the existing plan, this is, this is what was submitted at the last, we have existing plans, no photos there.
I'm sorry, mistake, it might have been the previous to the last, my mistake.
So submitted May 31, perhaps?
Yes.
Nope. No, May 31 was again drawings, so.
You should have 42 photographs someplace.
Maybe the initial, the initial submission?
They were taken January of 17.
Do you have a copy on you?
Uh, yes, but I'm going to be referring to them.
Oh, ah, okay, so it's part of the initial submission folder, there are photographs taken?
Initial submission had 18 photographs, and then we supplemented it up to 42 photographs.
So there's photographs that are dated, or that were submitted on February 7th?
Yes.
Does that sound right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, does everybody find that? Okay, okay.
All right, as far as the neighborhood, the urban context that I'm bringing up is along King's Highway. In photograph number two, it's obvious that the building next to us, which extends from the property to King's Highway north, this is 80 feet into the R32 zoning, it's only 100 feet of the R7 zoning along King's Highway. But you can see the transition of the urban context of that building next to ours, which is more or less a suburban, it's not even in context with the rest of the buildings. The next photograph would be photograph number eight, if you could look at photograph number eight, this is King's Highway, so our building is actually behind the building on the left, this is the streetscape of King's Highway, it's, it's very urban, and it continues up and down King's Highway, both ways. The next photograph, number nine, again, you can see with the windows in that six-story, the building is actually on our property line, there's a courtyard, but all of those windows are actually looking down on the rest of the neighborhood, so as far as privacy and context and adjacent neighbors, you can see what we've been, what there is out there. Photograph number 11 has that also with the photograph, this is our rear yard now, with these windows on the property line, and we're getting rid of our garage, so our rear property play yard, or whatever you want to call it.
Sorry, which, which windows are on your property line?
All of those windows.
On, on photo number what, 11?
Photo 11.
Oh.
The building is on the property line, the sills actually project an inch over our property line.
Okay.
And they have a 15-foot rear yard, you can see how the building actually takes up almost our entire rear yard, as far as our property. Photograph number 16, now this is across the street, taken from the roof of that building. You can see the buildings in the background, which are not in the 400 feet, but you can see the context, the urban context, that's Bedford Avenue. And you could also see that these buildings across the street, what we found in our research, which has been brought up to this board, there's only been one other B S A special permit granted in this entire neighborhood. We've researched every building as far as building department filings, and what we found is that they're filing to do something, and they're doing something else, they're filing not to enlarge, and they're enlarging. If you look at 16, the two buildings there, those are three-story buildings, one of them has a stop work order, that's the one closest to the, to the large building, but the other one, you can look at our listing, we indicated every application that we could find in the building department. The next photograph, 18.
So wait a second, so you're saying the, the ones in photograph 16 have stopped work?
Are not lawful.
They're not lawful?
They're not lawful three-story buildings.
What are we supposed to do with them?
And no one seems to really care about it. The community board actually approved our design with a 1.29 F A R unanimously, I mean, the community board believes that development in the area is something that they would like. However, if you look at 18, the two buildings, 1556 and 1572, do not have any applications in the building department, and you could obviously see they must have been done by the same fellow, three stories. Across the street is the B S A building that's pointed out.
The one on 20, 1573?
Yes, on 27th Street.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So here's the thing, you know, if we talk about illegal construction, other than sending, other than telling D O B that we see issues of lack of enforcement, we're not an enforcement agency, once you come to this agency, we have to comply with the terms of the special permit, the law, and we can't, we can't speak for D O B's, say, lack of enforcement, or perhaps they try to enforce, and there's only certain kinds of mechanisms, such as violations and so on, there's only so far D O B can go in its enforcement, of course, if you have piles and piles of E C B violations against your property, it makes it hard to get a mortgage, for example, or to sell, so that might be a deterrent for some people, but for others, they don't care, so there's only so far you can go.
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to make the case that because they did it, we have any kind of standing in that.
Right, right.
But what I'm trying to point out is that a lot of these do not have violations, and I guess we could, being sensitive to adjacent neighbors, if you look at number 12, I know that there's a concern about directly adjacent and adjacent property owners and their quality of life, photograph 12 is from our rear yard, looking at what is actually a story and a half garage, drawing.
Well, what's that, what's the height of that, when you say story and a half, what's its height?
It's over 13 feet.
Okay, so that's 13 feet.
14 feet.
So, if, you know, if I were to just look at, how does the urban system inform the design of this building, independent of the subject of whether or not you've got an existing building, right? So, what, so far what you presented is saying to us, saying to me, that the six-story brick building that's next door indicates that you have more latitude on that side of the site to obstruct the rear yard, because similar to what they've done, right? But, and with respect to immediately behind, you have 13 feet of, of legitimate rear yard obstruction, but, you know, so if you were to mold the building to be responsive to the neighbors, like we had this application, I think it's coming up next, or maybe we just had it, where they were so respectful of the neighbors, they have a 27-foot setback at the second floor, so it says, the, the first floor, they say, okay, everybody has a garage in the rear, so build out to your 20-foot point, but the second floor is so respectful, and so if you were designing a building that is responsive to the neighbor- And so if you were designing a building that is responsive to the neighboring conditions, you would modulate the form in the rear to say, to, to be deeper at the northern portion of your site, and shallower at the, at the southern portion of the site. But, but it's not doing that. It's not responsive. It's just, is, it's what it wants to be, as opposed to looking at the context. And I think that's the problem that I have with so many of these applications that aggressively insert themselves into the block, not caring at all what's going on adjacent. And, you know, the fact that neighbors don't complain, sometimes it's because they can't complain, or they don't feel that they have the freedom to complain, and sometimes they complain. And, you know, just to put yourself in their shoes, what would it feel like, right? And nobody seems to want to put themselves in the shoes of their neighbors. And I, I just don't understand that. So, so you've given us a lot of useful data, and I think you could design a building based on this useful data.
Well, as I, what I'd like to do is address the adjacent, the effect of the adjacent neighbors. All right, we'll try and go through the photographs a little bit faster. Photographs thirteen and fourteen, that's the shadow of the six-story building that I was taking the photograph from. These folks are using their yards, they have a pool, they have their garages, but you can see the effect of that building next to them. We're talking about a two-story building. We're hoping for a twenty-two-foot, two-story rear yard. We will get to the rear yard issue. But I think as far as the neighborhood context, which is what I'm trying to show here, that the adjacent six buildings to the south are not really to be considered the be-all of the neighborhood character. And that the streetscape, I think we are being sensitive to them, as far as the character of that side of the street. The other side of the street is totally different. In fact, the whole neighborhood is totally different from these six buildings. The other issue is, as was pointed out by Vice Chair Chanda, that the floor plan, if you look at the first floor plan in the proposed conditions, which would be P4, as was pointed out in the statement of facts and other issues, this is a single-family home, I'm working with the owners, it's not some kind of a corporation or whatever. As a licensed architect, I'm obligated to look at my client's agenda, and look at their program, and look at the laws and requirements and regulations, and give them a solution that will give them a building that they can function in, and that they can, in this case, they're probably going to be living here for the rest of their lives. I mean, this is the commitment in these neighborhoods that these people are making, and that's one of the reasons why we come for these special permits, because it is an avenue to keep people in the neighborhood. If you look at the first floor, the owner here is an amateur chef, he enjoys, he's a, I won't say he's a, he's a big guy. The idea here was that they want to have an opportunity to have large dinner parties and people coming into the house. They can't do that where they are now. They bought this sixty-foot lot, even though it was next to that six-story building, because they were looking for a larger space for their family, and so they could entertain, and he could cook, and he's going to be raising his herbs in the greenhouse. So they have a particular agenda, and this design came from that. The fact that it has a large dining and parlor, but the entrance area was specifically made to accommodate not just the family, and not just on the holidays. It's something that they would like to do as, as an ongoing thing. So the family spaces were more or less to the back. And if you'd see the existing wall, the east wall of the building, the white wall, this is part of the issues that we have with maintenance of the fifty percent. Making the building any smaller from the rear, we cannot move that existing wall, so we're going from sixteen to fourteen to twelve to ten as we move back. The second floor could afford to lose that space, even though we still have the existing wall. If you look at drawing, drawing five, the second floor, we discussed this with the owner, and we can move that wall back to give us a larger rear yard. A sixteen-foot master bedroom is more or less for the area, but fourteen feet, going less than fourteen feet might not work, but we could go back another two feet, which would still accommodate the owner's requirements, and also placate the board's concern about adjacent neighbors and the setbacks. The layout of this building, the width of this building, is actually in tune with the cottages. If you look at the ratio of width of building to width of property, the cottages come in at seventy-four percent. On the fifty-foot lots, those cottages are fifty-four, seventy-four percent of the width of the property is their building. We're looking for seventy-five percent. So as far as the ratio of the width of the building from the street and the width of the property, we are in context with those five cottages as far as the width of the building. The context as far as coverage would have to go beyond those five cottages, obviously they're so small.
You're talking about the width and percentage, you're not talking about the actual street wall?
No, the actual percentage of the building compared to the property on the fifty-foot lots.
Right, but you know, there's lots of ways you perceive it, and most people don't perceive width ratios, right? They perceive length, right? So in, in this case, you're making your building forty-five feet wide, when before it was, when the other little houses are, whatever they are, twenty...
They're also on fifty-foot lots, so the ratio of their...
Right, understand, but I, you know, there's a lot of different ways that you can look at it. So there, those other houses are thirty feet wide, and you're making, you're increasing the width by fifteen feet. So you could argue that's not, you could argue two different ways.
Right.
But you could argue that fifteen feet wider is much wider than everybody else, because you're saying, actually, I don't necessarily agree. No, you're saying that those little cottages are not typical of this area, so you shouldn't even be able to look at them as part of neighborhood character, because there's only five of them. But, so in that case, those five at approximately thirty feet each are now, now this one is anomalous, because it's forty-five feet wide. I mean, that's an argument that you could make. So, so, you know, you're kind of arguing in two directions, but I really need to go back to the threshold, because until we get past the threshold, which is retention of fifty percent of the perimeter walls, and the fact that the board has consistently required that all of the applications retain fifty percent of the perimeter and fifty percent of the floor area, the joists, and that it not be subsumed inside of an existing building, we specifically, I think that was Ocean Avenue? No.
Shore.
Shore, Shore Road. We specifically sent the architect away, and said, if you do not find fifty percent perimeter wall retention, there's no, there's no ability for us to look at the special permit. And we can't undo the whole basis of the special permit all of a sudden. So, so this is, this is the board behaving consistently.
Absolutely.
And, and for you to say, no, I'm the architect, I'm going to be the one who makes sure that we keep all, retain the walls, that's not, that's not actually, for one, it doesn't actually happen like that in the field, but besides that, that's not the board standard. The board standard is fifty percent of the perimeter walls. Is there a way to design this building? Absolutely with that. Is there a way to do it symmetrically? Probably not. Does it need to be a symmetrical house? I don't see why. That house that had to be redesigned on Shore Road actually was sort of a wing-shaped house, or bird, bird-shaped. So there are a lot of different ways that you can occupy this site. You have plenty of room in terms of complying side yards, because you're not needing a side yard waiver. So you have a lot of room to work, and, but it seems like you're insisting on only working in this one particular way. If you want to be able to use this fifty percent, this special permit, you need to work your program with the requirements of the special permit. I know there's a solution there.
Well, I think, if I may, we may, we may have found the solution. I mean, if you look at the calculations, by calculation on the E-drawings, we show the fifty percent walls that are staying, and we're keeping the entire first and second floor deck.
But they're inside the building.
Well, as was pointed out in the previous hearing by Commissioner Montanez, she graciously pointed out that this building is a small building on a large lot. It's located midway in the middle of the property, from front to back, it's pushed over to the south lot line, and it's only that size because they were using the same blueprint for all the other buildings. This one had a sixty-foot lot. And the way the building was designed, it has these articulations sticking out of the south, out of the other side. The only way you can enlarge this building is to build around it. And I think what we're showing here is that we are main, if you looked at the means and methods that I submitted, and I am registered as a construction superintendent with the building department, the means and methods that were given to the board in this last submission clearly indicate that we are maintaining the entire frame of the building during construction, and we're not going to be cutting out the portions to be taken out. On drawing P-18, which I think is unusual as far as a submission to the board, I don't know if other applicants are doing this, but what we've done here is given an elevation of those walls. P-18 shows the actual existing walls that are being maintained, with the new openings in them. Now, we didn't calculate the percentage, but the point we're trying to make, obviously, is that these walls are remaining, and the entire frame can be retained, and it's going to make it easier for the framing to go forward.
Okay, so here's the thing.
So as far as the fifty percent, I really think we're making the case, and we are...
Here's the thing, when I look at the, and, you know, I don't want to repeat this, we talked about this, the dog was killed a long time ago here, okay? I'm just going to say it very briefly. When I look at the floor plan, and I see how much is actually being incorporated into the interior of the building, it is like the back of the kitchen cabinet, an eighteen-inch section that is being used in a closet, a return on either side of an elevator, a wall on the side of a closet, a wall on the side of a closet with a, with a, you know, it's piecemeal. And this is exactly what the applicant on Shore Road tried to do, and we said no. And it would be wrong for the board to apply differently to your case than it does to every other case.
Of course.
So I, I don't actually want to go any further with this, because I will not undermine the entire basis of the special permit for this case, because there, because you need to go back and look at this as an architectural solution, where there are restrictions on how the project is developed. And, and just like you would any law, if there was, if it was a difference between retention of these walls so that you could stay within this 1968 building code, you would do that thing. So that's what the requirements of the special permit are, and you need to accomplish it according to the requirements. I don't want to discuss this part anymore.
The reason we address this is because it was brought up at the last hearing.
Right.
And drawing P-18 is a direct response to that, that if you take a cut through those openings, you will see small bits of rooms and walls. But if you look at the entire wall, it's, it's clear that we're maintaining the walls themselves.
But there's, the house is being subsumed by the enlargement, that's not the purpose of the special permit. Special permit was intended for modest enlargements, that the sort of standard mentality is that it become these exploded mansions was not the intention of the special permit. They were supposed to be for modest enlargements that are working with, within the confines of the existing structure, and this is not doing this. This is dropping a whole new building on top of the existing house. That's not what's allowed by the special permit. I don't want to go through this anymore.
Well, are we mandated to maintain the perimeter walls on the exterior of the building? That's almost impossible.
I don't want to go through this anymore, we've talked about it over and over again.
Mr. D'Angelo?
That's enough, okay?
Any speakers? Any speakers now?
Are there any more speakers?
Let's set a date. Mr. D'Angelo, how much time you need?
He's going to need time to really work this out, so let's just move this.
Can we go with a twenty-four-foot setback on the second floor?
So the point is that you have done an urban study. The study speaks. It speaks very clearly to me. You have an imposition from one lot line, a different imposition from another lot line, and a different from another. Your building can be responsive to that. You can show how respectful you are of your neighbors by designing the building accordingly. So I don't want to design the building for you, I don't want to negotiate what's a right, the data tells you what's the right approach. So I'm going to put this on for the end of February, because I think you need time to work this out with your clients. So February 27th for submission on February 7th. Unless you want more time.
If I may just, we are not mandating that the existing perimeter walls remain on the exterior of the building, are we?
That's what we've been saying, and I think you should, what's very instructive is, take a look at that Shore Road project. Do we know the address, Henry?
Sixteen twenty, I believe.
Sixteen twenty, Shore Boulevard. Shore Boulevard. That was a case identical to this one. And the architect first said at the hearing, it's impossible, I can't do it, that's the end of the project, and X weeks later comes back with, we left the record open for them to figure it out, and X weeks later, they come back with a solution that met the findings, and the board was able to approve. So that's your task.
But we can have some of the perimeter walls within the proposed building.
Mr. D'Angelo, enough.
Enough, yeah.
Well, I mean, we're, we're trying to come with a design...
Take a look at the Shore Boulevard case, some more direction we can't give you.
And if I have a question, I'll ask the examiner.
More repeating of the same criteria, we can't do. Okay, thank you.
Item number eighteen, 20164301-VZ, 136 Oxford Street, Brooklyn. Is this which, for which one? This is for anyone?
Good afternoon, Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnik, V.C., on behalf of the applicant. I brought with me today Mr. Mealy, who is the architect, to discuss some of these issues with you.
Each one, each stack is a...
I'm an engineer, I'm not an architect.
Okay. Did you state your name already? I'm sorry, we were handing...
Name's Joel Mealy.
They're all sets, an entire set. This is, and just because everyone was speaking at the same time, I just want to repeat, the speaker is Joel Mealy.
And everybody should have in front of them, hopefully, one Sanborn map and one clip to get stapled piece of paper with. So firstly, I was asked, well, we were asked about the side yards, and because the 1985 plans are so old and hard to read, I gave a Sanborn map, and there's also ones in the file from the notice of comments from 1966 that show an approximately the same side yards.
Okay. And the Sanborn, it's 1982 Sanborn, but it shows a row of identical houses with very narrow side yards. What those are exactly, not known, but very...
But we have even more Sanborn mats, but I didn't want to give you third and a whole, so if you need any other years, we can come back.
Yeah, but it looks like the row of houses is identical, so they, I'm sure they weren't built in 1982, they were probably from the 50s.
Yeah, and you have one in the notice of comments from 1930 and 1966. So if you need to look at this.
Okay, so that was sort of a threshold question, right?
Yeah. And I was, yeah, we had a meeting with your board, and we discussed this as well, and this was just...
Meeting with staff?
A meeting with staff, I mean, not the board, sorry.
Take care.
Staff, sorry. Sorry, I meant to say staff.
Applying, okay. So the issue with that is, we're, we're looking at effectively the abandonment of the variance, because the 622 special permit didn't exist at the time the variance was granted.
Yeah.
And the 622 could have allowed these disenlargement, the enlargements that took place.
Yes, it had.
With the exception of the parking.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the next part of it has to do with the total demolition question.
Okay. I was going to answer easier questions first, but if you...
Oh, go ahead, answer, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it in order of what I wrote.
Okay, I was just trying to get through some stuff first. So nextly, the Google aerial, you said when you flipped it around, it didn't exactly show you, you thought at the second floor that there were twenty-foot second floors.
Right.
So I have in front of you two previously approved... So I have in front of you two previously approved special permits, which do have... It just printed out the second floors for you, so you can see that they're on the same block.
These are for neighbors.
Neighbors, to show you that other on that block, other neighbors do have at the second floor a 20-foot rear that were approved by the...
Where are they built? Where are they?
They're both built.
And there's a map, which I tried to just like walk you around the block, but you can see that where the dots are is where they are. Where the... There's a white dot with a black around it.
So this building is 176 and the approv...
There's 176 Oxford and 129 Norfolk Street, which one is in the middle.
Can you repeat those addresses?
176 Oxford and 129 Norfolk.
So this is 136?
And we're at 136.
Right, so...
Norfolk, sorry. They both have 20-foot.
So that's the thing. When you look on Google...
Sometimes they're old, so maybe they were built post-Google. I'm not sure.
Yeah, the Google Maps will typically say when they were...
They say 2017 on the... They may be not correct, but...
And you're the architect of the record for both of these buildings?
Yes, ma'am. Both houses are essentially complete, the CFOs. I don't know if the CFOs have been issued yet.
Okay. So where is 129 relative to the specific site?
So it's around the block? They would actually... I think they almost share backyards there.
So 136, you can see a dot, and above it, you can see 1 Norfolk Street. There's a dot on the first page, that's why I gave you the...
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah, I mean, this is very nonspecific. On the San... Sanborn map?
Oh, you'd rather...
Yeah, because to understand the relationship of the rear yard, it's not for the principle that the board has granted prior 20-foot... The question... The principle is, what is this yard backing up against, and how will it affect adjoining properties?
It's like four houses down on the other block.
Okay, so 1, 2, 3 houses down opposite is 129 Norfolk, and the other one is way down the block. So less of a... And it has a different kind of relationship to its neighbors. So that's the thing. What we're looking at is the immediate neighbors, right?
We are just trying to give you examples that he could come up and speak on.
So and that's why, like, if I look at the Google Earth image, there is a house like two doors down that looks like it might at the second floor be imposing more on the rear yard. Don't know what it is. But then, when you look kind of up and down the block, you don't see any... Any others. So if... In order to make this argument, you really need to do a site visit and look at the actual conditions, and...
And you're really going to consider the ones directly behind it?
Well, you're affecting the immediate neighbors, right?
Because I... So but the block is too...
Too wide because it's not... It has a different condition. And by the way, you know, some of this is, okay, the board approved some of these things in the past, but now we're seeing what the effect of those approvals are on adjoining properties. I mean, we've got onsite visits where gardens are walled in by the approval.
I'd also like to note, though, that the neighbor has spoken with all the people around it, and nobody has come up to...
Right, but that's another thing.
But I just... Because we were saying about caring about neighbors and talking with neighbors.
Mm-hmm. No, but I'm talking about it from an urban design perspective, not whether or not the specific neighbor personally is okay with it because they may be planning the same thing, or they're afraid of speaking out against their neighbor because of community issues and all that sort of stuff, right? So we're just looking at this from a neighborhood character perspective, right? Okay. So that's basically the appro... The analytical approach, right? Neighborhood character. Okay. So did you want to go on to the next question?
So I guess now we can talk about the 50% existing building. However, before he speaks, I would like to know, and I don't know if you saw it, but on 1114, we submitted an extra... Another proposed plans with a calculation on AP 113 to show you that what we're keeping is 50%.
Right, but I'm going by the letter that Mr. Mealy submitted. Where, when I read that, it sounds... And I think I read that with Commissioner Shita, who... So it sounds like demo, right? Existing building is not being lifted. The existing first-floor structure and second-floor enlargement will be removed, and after the remaining existing flood damage resistant exterior walls are increased in height, a new non-combustible first-floor structure will be installed. That sounds like you keep it for a while, then you replace it with new, and when... Right?
We are keeping all... We are keeping exterior walls.
But so it's 50% of the exterior walls and 50% of the floor joists.
Okay, so what we're keeping is, we're keeping 50% of the surface area of the existing perimeter walls.
When you say surface area...
Height and width.
Okay.
Not just perimeter. We're giving you real area, because I've seen games where some people... Some applicants give you a length of wall that they're keeping, but the length of the wall's two feet high.
Oh, there's a new one.
Yeah, I heard of that.
Okay? So we're giving you real numbers, real surface area perimeter wall calculation. That show we're keeping 50% of the existing lawful perimeter wall.
Okay. How... Okay, sorry.
You can see that on 111. We actually... We actually hatched in, if you look on 111, 112, and 113, you can see the ghost in of the existing walls.
110 or 1...
111, 110, they all have... They all have... Some of them, if we're not keeping a wall, we don't show anything.
No, but actually, it's... Go back to that one.
110?
Yeah, no, I'm just looking. I'm sorry. Which one do you want?
He has them in front of you. You can either point it.
Say?
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, yeah. I just can't read the writing underneath the text. It says, "New portion of existing wall." See, if we look at... I don't know which one this is. 111. The existing wall to remain is that section that's 42 feet on the ground floor. That's essentially... That's now called cellar.
Yep, by 7 foot 7 high.
But then the second floor is being entirely replaced.
Yes.
Or newly first floor because of...
Correct. It will be replaced.
So replace means new.
Means it's going to come down because it's made out of wood, and it can't be made out of wood anymore.
Okay. So, you know, the lift houses are even harder for us to deal with with the special permit, right? Because everything becomes a cellar, kind of, right? But so I don't know how your calculations are working. If you're replacing entirely the second floor wall...
It's much smaller. You can see graphically, it's only half the length of the first floor wall.
Right.
That's how. If the second floor is much smaller...
Oh, the actual second floor is a small... Right, but so you're saying if we... Simply by keeping the first floor walls, that part saying existing wall to remain?
That's all I gave you. We have 50% of the existing walls.
So you're totaling up the existing walls of second and first together?
And then taking the percentage.
Taking the percentage. Okay. And your diagrams are explaining that. Can you tell us again? Where are your diagrams explaining that that measurement's taking place?
So the measurement is on, I think it's 113?
It's in a little box, 113. You added it on...
Bottom right corner.
Ah, but you didn't do sort of diagramming out the...
I could give you the actual math, how I got to 592, but I gave you the dimensions so that if you wanted to, you could do it yourself.
Yeah, so... Okay, so if you could, for each portion that you're retaining, show on the drawing where it is and how big it is.
Absolutely. If that's what you want, not a problem.
Yeah, so that we can see where... How you're doing the math.
Not a problem.
Okay. And then the other part of it is, the existing... I'm just reading again your statement. The existing joists and second floor are being removed. So and will not remain, and the proposed work meets the current building department definition of an alteration, which they use an entirely different...
I understand.
Analytical method, right? So what happens to the joists now?
So the problem with retaining the joists are, we're in the flood hazard area.
Right.
So we can't keep the floor at that elevation. We have to raise the floor. If I keep the joist, you'll have to jump over the joist to move through the floor where those joists are staying because they'll be halfway up the floor.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
So we have to raise the floor joist. They're down here right now. They have to be raised to here to be involved in flood hazard.
But you could be... So what we have done with these lifts because...
It's not a lift.
No, I understand. But what we've done with these kind of raises, where we say, okay, you know, the FEMA... The floodplain regulations kind of are really, let's say, came into existence not in recognition of the 73 622 special permit, and we certainly don't want to prevent people from complying with floodplain regulations. So the way we've worked it on some of these other applications is the floor joists are lifted, the same ones. They're lifted and put in new beam pockets. So we can say at least the floor area is kind of still there, because the whole issue is this is an enlargement of an existing building, right? So if you... Whether or not it's a lift where you're jacking...
Completely understand.
You're still taking the floor joists and you're moving them up so the floor area didn't go away.
So if you want me to change the plan to say that these floor joists are going to be...
Rellocated.
I actually say that in the letter. We're removing the joists and reinstalling them at a higher elevation.
Well, actually, you say the existing joist will be removed and will not remain.
Because when they're not standing in that cardinal case...
Okay, so you need to say we're taking the existing floor joist and we're lifting those existing floor joists into new beam pockets.
Not a problem. Absolutely.
All right. That's the only way we have been able to work these kinds of lifts. Lifts, those different versions of...
Maybe extending that give like impression that still there, just extending these joists.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. But they... But they tell us that they create new beam pockets, and I think that really clarifies the situation.
We actually are extending the wall height also because it doesn't end where the existing wall ends, so we're going to have... We have new beam pockets.
You have to withstand the height of the wall.
Correct.
Right, new beam pockets, okay. Because this is a masonry wall, right?
This is a concrete wall.
Yeah, concrete, so it... Okay, it's pockets, then. Okay. All right. So yeah, so if you could clearly diagram that and revise your letter, and actually, the description should be on the drawings as opposed to the letter because it becomes part of the record and makes it clear to DOB what to expect. Okay. And then we also had some... Just some problems with dimensions on the drawings. You have to match your existing drawings with the proposed. Some of the dimensions didn't match.
So I think the problem with matching the dimensions was the fact that the existing board drawings are not very accurate. So we used the survey. If you compare my dimensions to the survey, my dimensions are within a half an inch because I round off to the nearest half inch. If you want, I'll...
No, it should be what... Fact, right? But to clarify why there's a difference, but for instance, in your existing sections, there's a difference between the first floor and the proposed, which makes it look like actually the first floor joists are dropping, which is the opposite of what you're saying. It says the first... It says first floor in the existing sections is 16.31, and in the proposed is 15.91. Now, that may be inches.
It's probably because the floor classifications changed between exist as a result of the flood hazard. It's no longer first floor on grade. It's a cellar on grade.
But still, you're measuring... Unless before you were measuring off of Manhattan Datum, and now it's NAVD.
That could be too.
NAVD.
I'll look at that, but I don't think there's a...
Okay, and to the extent there's a difference, just explain that there's a difference because...
Okay.
Okay, and then the issue also about the height.
So there... Sorry to bring you back. So we, as a request of the board to lower the height, we lowered the cathedral ceiling, and there's no more cathedral ceiling by 4 feet, and we provided you with this diagram, which I think shows that, you know, it fits within the homes next to it.
It's better, but you know, renderings are amazing things.
Yeah. You know, we're trying. And we lowered it by 4 feet, and that made the cathedral... So we got rid of the cathedral ceilings, and in turn, the... That gave us more floor area because then we had to put floor area in the attic. So that's where that floor area came up.
It's not about the floor area. The question is, since the attic is really basically a boiler room, right? Why can't it... Why can't that sort of occupiable space be within a dormer instead so it doesn't look like a house dropped on top of a house? It's, you know, it's this sort of large box thing.
I think part of that was just the ceiling height clearance. I can look at it to see if I can change it to more of a dormer look instead of... I know it has straight walls. I can see if I can create a dormer effect.
Okay. Okay. All right. And then there was a comment about, from Commissioner Shonda, about why did the floor area actually go up? It should have maybe been a wash if you're increasing it for the attic, but you took away for the stairs.
So as Elise explained, what happened was when we lost the cathedral ceilings, we ended up with floor area in the attic that has more than 5-foot ceiling height. That made the floor area ratio go up.
But you also took away the stair. You had those bump outs that you took away those for floor area.
The only bump out we also took off was the stair bump out, which ended up making... Because the stair can't be a U-shape now. It has to be straight.
Right.
The clearance is required, the attic wall to move a little bit so you could get under the stair for headroom.
Oh, okay.
So it's a mix of the stairs.
I see.
So a little mix of both. I mean, I can look at it again to see if I can shrink the attic a little. I'm already doing that, so maybe the floor area will go back down.
Right. Okay. Well, also...
I just thought there was a miscalculation. That's what I...
Yeah. Also, when you look at the dormer, you might have a little, some more area that's below the maximum height. I don't know. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so, again, for the, for the second-floor extension, you need to look at, for one, how you justify it with the immediate neighbors. And if not, to move that wall back and give a little more breathing room for that, on that second floor. Okay. All right, so, what kind of...
Your soonest date.
Say again?
Your soonest date you have available.
Yes, that's what we're looking at. Okay, maybe we could do one more of these. Okay, I'd say February 13th, though we don't have any at the beginning of the... How about January 30th? This is the last 622 on January 30th, okay? And that would mean a submission date...
January 10th?
10th, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. How's everybody? Needing a break? Everybody good?
Item number 19, 2017-38BZ, 11155 East 28th Street, Brooklyn.
Hi, Jessica Rubenstein. On behalf of the applicant, the most respectful homeowner in the world who has a rear yard that's 27 feet.
I would say, model homeowner.
Exactly. We thought the same. So, we updated, the architect heard the comments at yesterday's review session and he updated the plans and I just would like to pass them out.
Some of it was because we couldn't tell what's existing and... Right, okay.
Email it, Levi.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, what you have in front of you are two sets of drawings. One is the existing and one is the proposed. The existing drawings were updated with a chart tallying the perimeter wall length for the first and second stories. And then we incorporated the lengths that we established from the existing plans into a three of the proposed plans, which then lead us to establish that we are maintaining 50.03% of the first and second exterior walls.
Okay, so, one of the things that I had asked, I can't tell because I didn't look fast enough, but, all right, so you dimensioned, that's what we wanted to see also. On the drawing, you dimensioned the existing wall to remain?
Yes.
So that when we look at the calculation, we can see that it's there.
Yes, and we also hatched the elevations to make it a little more clear as well.
I don't know if there were any other issues besides... Oh, we said that it was a little bit high.
So, I know there was that comment. I also just would like to remind the board, a little friendly reminder, that the neighbor at 1151 East 28th Street, who originally wrote the letter in opposition to our application, attended the previous hearing to state his support now for the application. We had rearranged the entrance. It was originally in the side yard and we switched it to the front. And as a result, that neighbor is now satisfied with that application. In addition to that, in our statement of facts, we also included seven other homes on the social block with heights of up to about 38 feet. And those are legal heights. So, we felt that the 30-foot, nine-inch height was reasonable in context with the area.
And what, 33-foot nine?
33-foot nine.
Right, so, just because it's been a, yeah. So, 33-foot nine and on the social block itself, there are other houses that are higher than that, is what you're saying?
Correct, and that's all laid out in our statement of fact.
Okay. Everybody, any other issues? Okay, is there any speakers on this? Okay, I really appreciate you being so responsive and you're a very generous client. Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Abstein.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 20, 2017-244BZ, 2208 Bowler Avenue, The Bronx. We have a request from Germans on this, pardon.
Yes, hi, Eric Platnik, we've asked for a German.
Hi, yeah. Yeah, so we're into February though, unfortunately, right?
I know your schedule and I...
Yeah.
Canes me for the church, but they couldn't get their materials on time.
I don't know what to say. February 13th, yeah, February 13th with a submission on... Oops. February 20th, January 24th. Yeah, January 24th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is Mr. Rente ready?
Yeah, do you have, did you get her email?
No, she didn't send it to me, it's from Carla, I thought.
Where's Carla? I didn't get it. 2017. I don't have Elise yet.
I guess we just call, we need to come back after lunch.
Carlo? Oh, this is it? Is this the email? This is the email. Okay, she just sent it to you, right? It was sent to...
10, oh, I got it.
You got it?
One second.
Yeah, it's a cover letter with documentation.
Yes, I got it.
Okay, good. Okay, so then you take back a second call.
Yeah.
Second call, item, item number 13, 4210BZ, 2170 Mill Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so you submitted into, we closed. So, you submitted into the record copies of the...
The DOB documentation.
The DOB applications and their status, right? For those other two sites.
Right, neighboring properties that are becoming community facilities.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Right, so we see...
2186 Mill Avenue.
Those are Cs of O though.
This is a C of O. 2186.
How do they have a C of O for classroom?
21...
Okay, so those are the applications that are showing that as recently as October 13th, they had a plan examination, which hasn't yet been approved, but it shows that it's in process. And that is for...
Oh, that was for 2186 Mill Avenue.
Okay, and then? That's just a plan examination review? And then keep going?
Reexam, posted in September.
And that they have, really, they've submitted everything, all the required documentation? And then this one?
This was 2150 Mill Avenue.
Right, that one shows that the zoning review has been approved.
And then these are...
Those are the ZRD1, ZD1.
2150.
Okay. Okay, just to establish that work is anticipated on those adjoining lots and so maybe in the next four years, life will be perfect for this development. Or within the next four years. Okay, so then for a motion to grant and extension?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Okay. It's 1 o'clock, does anybody want... Oh, we could do the two PCs.
We're going to do two PCs, but do you want a break now or are you going to do...
We could do the two PCs and then maybe break after, yeah. All right.
Zoning calendar, new items, item number five, 2017-151BZ, 161 Bowery Street, Manhattan. We're taking cases out of what?
161 Bowery.
161 Bowery.
Yeah, 161 Bowery.
Again, I said...
We've already been through this.
This is, I'm sorry, I'm from Brooklyn, what can I tell you?
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. Thank you for taking me, so I don't have to look around. Yesterday's review session, I attended yesterday's review session. There were two real comments that I heard. One was regard to the sprinkler and fire alarms. I apologize if it wasn't clear. The point of those interior photos is to actually show that the fire alarm and sprinkler system were installed. The statement of facts and the plans show, since this is legalization, it shows what's actually built and what's maintained, all the constructions done. Since the application was submitted though, there has been some movement in terms of the fire alarm and sprinkler system. I submitted yesterday documents to the board. I'm not sure if you were able to see them. I have copies if not. But we submitted with regard to the sprinkler system. It was approved and installed by pursuant to the DOB approved plans, which were previously submitted. Yesterday, we submitted the hydrostatic test, which was, which we passed, and the TR1 for the special inspections for the hydrostatic test, which we also passed. With regard to the fire alarm system, it was approved and permitted on August 3rd, 2017. As noted, this fire alarm system ties into the building's overall system. The building's overall system was signed off per DOB and we submitted amended biz print out to show the sign-off. We also submitted the FDNY letter of approval, which shows the sign-off for the underlying building and it notes that it includes the entire building, cellar first through the upper floors. So, therefore, we've established, I believe, that the fire alarm system and the sprinkler are installed, operational. And now that the building's systems are signed off and once we get approval, we can sign off as well.
I see, so they have to be signed off for the main building before...
The main building got signed off, so now there's nothing else. We had minor changes, just to conform to the use.
Okay.
But that's already in the system and it's already been established. The last question, I believe, was the hours of operation. I apologize if it wasn't clear. I read it, it seems clear to me, but it just may be my...
You know, I take the blame for it because after reading so many documents towards the end, I may have...
You know, I actually quoted a different piece.
I went back and looked at it.
I changed it around anyways to make it a little clearer. I submitted the amended statement of facts, so I hope it's clear.
It's clear, thank you.
Okay, great. Are there any speakers on this? This is, no, the sound attenuation was, they were provided and I just wanted to say...
It should be incorporated into the final statement, yes.
This is a kind of an internal comment, just to make sure they all kept together in one drawing. And I just want to make sure there are no speakers on this, 161 Bowery. Okay, so, and that, any other comments from anybody? No? So then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, 2017-203BZ, 295 Madison Avenue, Manhattan.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, but we have, we're going to... Give me a minute. Okay, um, okay, sorry.
Good afternoon, commissioners. In response...
Did you already state your name?
Frank Angelino. On behalf of Everybody Fights, 295 Madison Avenue. In response to the question, the fire inspection took place yesterday. And it was...
Fire inspection by fire department?
By the fire department, took place yesterday.
Okay. All right. So, that's actually what we know.
You know the outcome of the inspection list?
Yes, I think that it's operational and it's, there was a sign-off. There's two punch list items that they have to do within the next 30 days and they will do them.
I mean, I think the main thing about what we used to talk about with Mr. Skududo from the fire department was once it's in the fire department's system, they're aware. And so, that's with absent fire department's active participation here. Because I don't want to hold it up for not knowing, okay.